Yes. If, we're about to start the meeting, gentlemen. If you could all have a seat. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Going to begin tonight's Board of Selectment meeting, December 10th, 2018, at 6:30 PM with our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd stand and join me. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, living, just, just, for all. Thank you. We'll begin with a resident comment. There will be no votes and there will be no discussion from the board. Mr. Croner?
Good evening, thank you. Mitchell Croner, 3 Cannon Hill Road Extension. I noticed you have a long agenda and I'll be brief and before the holidays and just, I just wanted to address the fact about special town meeting. As you're aware, there was an Article VI regarding the extension of the sewer requiring a town meeting vote. And I think my only point was that special town meetings should be reserved for articles from the Finance Director, this board, Police Chief. I just don't think it's a good precedent to allow citizen articles at a special town meeting. Those of us that came out in the pouring rain on the first Monday and then came back the second Monday, I think there's kind of an expectation with the voters, we kind of want to do, do the towns business, help the town, but not turn it into anything like an annual town meeting. I know this board has been very, tried to be very pro-business. I don't want to get into too much of that article, but I thought it was considered kind of anti-business when you try to limit the extension of the sewer. Again, I think the board's done a good job. We have a town planner now. And I think a bylaw like that, although it didn't require any public hearings, as an attorney, I'm often asked about the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. Spirit of the law on this type of issue would have been, meet with the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners. And if the article comes back in the spring, that would be the appropriate time. And I just think special town meeting, there's a requirement that citizen petitions need 100 signatures and there's a reason for that. On a more positive note, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday. I'd like to thank Denise for having the Hanukkah greetings up on the town board. That was very nice and thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. Motion to approve payroll warrant 19-23 in the amount of $162,037.69.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor? Motion to approve bill warrant 19-23 in the amount of $1346,674.10.
I'll second that.
Okay, awesome. I'll just break it down so that everybody knows. Town $103,337.94. Water and sewer $31,472.73. Payroll withholding $61,306.53. Health insurance $32,362.45. Light bills $130,465.94. Grants and revolvings $58,913.96. Pentucket assessment $794,972.66. Essex Technical Assessment $95,327. And the capital $38,514.89 for a total of $1346,674.10. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Terrific. Moving right along, we have a recognition. Mr. Steve Hendry on his retirement from the Groveland Fire Department. Mr. Hendry there? So let me just read this citation. This is from the Town of Groveland to honor Steve Hendry. Be it resolved on this date, December 10th, 2018, the Groveland Board of Selectmen would like to join with all of the employees and residents of the Town of Groveland in honoring Steve Hendry on his retirement and to thank him for his dedication and many years of service to the Town of Groveland. Steve served the Town with honor and dignity for more than 20 years. Steve began his employment with the Town of Groveland on November 2nd, 1998 as a call firefighter. Over the last 20 years, Steve has responded to thousands of calls, both fire-related and medical, and has helped countless residents. Steve retired from the Fire Department on August 1st, 2018. Steve, your dedication to your position and to the Town will never be forgotten. On behalf of the Town of Groveland, the employees and the residents, we give you the community's heartfelt thanks and best wishes for continued health and happiness to you and your entire family. Congratulations in your retirement. Thank you. Thank you. Where's Tracy, where does she come from?
I don't know.
We never see the pictures anyway.
Well, Mr. Hendry, beyond that, I'd like to just extend my personal thanks for your many years of loyal service to the Town and its residents. With our folks like you that are willing to step up, roll up their sleeves and do what needs to be done. Wouldn't know where we'd be today, right?
Thank you. Mr. Hendry left behind his two sons that are now serving on the Fire Department.
Oh, wow.
This is Kevin and Connor.
On the way.
Great.
Thank you.
So hopefully those two can make two more and we have four, right? Just thinking ahead, boys. All right, we've got some time, so we'll skip around.
We should do the first discussion.
Uh, yes. So, some of you may have noticed, the chair has been empty for a number of weeks. And that's due to the resignation, sudden resignation of Ms. Carpenter from the Board of Selectmen. Due to personal reasons, she's decided that she can no longer fulfill her obligations as Selectman in the manner that it requires. Or she, could she give the attention that the folks and the taxpayers deserve of the position? So with that, I'd like to thank her for the time that she did serve. I think she found out that it's not always easy on this side of the table, as it appears. And I appreciate the things she did and the things she shared with me. I think it made me a better person and I hope her experience here will made her a better person. On that note, she was also Vice Chair. So we need to replace that position. And toward that end, I would like to nominate Mr. Dunn for Vice Chair. I think his service to the community is well noted. He's always the first to, that I can think of, to roll up his sleeves and do whatever's needed for the community. And I can't really think of a better candidate on this board to serve as Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? That motion is defeated.
We'll have to wait until Mike comes back.
We may have to.
Unless there's another motion, you could wait till you have a full board, four members.
Yeah, why don't we just wait?
Is that fine with you? Sure. Okay, we'll just table it off.
So may I just mention, so with the vacancy, you have two options. The board could decide to call a special election to fill the seat or you would continue with four members until the annual election, at which time there would be a second spot. One would be a, the full three-year term and one would be the one-year term, which is now vacated. So that is something that you should decide as a board, how you'd like to proceed with. In addition, Lisa was the Board of Selectmen's candidate on the Community Preservation Committee. So you will all, again, you can certainly wait until the January 7th, I think is the next meeting. But you will have to select a candidate to fill that role as well.
Okay, great. Do we need to decide that now or?
If you'd like to have a conversation about it. If not.
Would you like to open the conversation? You look like you have something to say.
Well, I definitely think we should wait till we have a full board. If Mike can make the next meeting, we'll just do all the business then. I think it's the fairest, the fairest way to do it, I guess, and we'll go from there.
Any thoughts?
Well, we're only, we're only four months from, from the election. By the time you post an election, take out, if the person takes out papers it's only going to be to, whether it may, the election. So it seems like it makes the most sense and it costs money to run a special election. Seems like the most sense would be to put it off, run with four people and put it off until the next annual town election.
I'd rather concur with that statement. I see no reason to rush it, it's so close now anyways.
So is someone making a motion?
So I'll just make a motion that we, we put it off until the next annual meeting.
Annual election.
Annual election, yeah. Meeting, election.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion?
No, we had it.
Those in favor?
Yep.
So we still got some time, so let's move on to the Council on Aging. No, we can't.
You can, but she's not here, so.
She's not here.
We can still just start a request. If you'd like to, or you can postpone that, however you'd like to handle it.
Yeah, we might as well, we still have some time. So, the Council on Aging, basically this board is now serving as the Capital Improvement Committee, because we don't have one at the moment. So they've submitted a couple of requests. I'm sure you found them in the packet. For quotes on a new van. And they have also been requested by the FinCom to provide a lease alternative as well.
So, we only received two capital improvement requests this year. One was the police cruiser, which you've already discussed. This is the second. So at this point, there's no need to vote. When we start the budget process, you can look at them and vote if you choose to support one or both or neither. But she did submit a full packet. It has been on the plan for a few years. It's been put off because we were leasing the van from.
MBRTA, right?
MVRTA, Merrimack Valley Regional Transit. They did turn the van over to us this past year for a dollar. But now that it's Town of Groveland property, the expenses have increased. They've seen an increase in maintenance costs and things. The van is an older van. So she is submitting it again, hoping that if we get a newer van, it will, will go several years before we start seeing the kind of repairs that we're now seeing on the older van that's out there.
Who was paying the repairs before?
Merrimack Valley Transit was paying it. That's why they did not want it anymore, because it was becoming too costly for them.
Okay, so this has been a hidden cost to us all these years.
Yes.
There is no, there's no possibility of re-upping with a new van through the same.
Option for us.
Reason being, they're just, it's not available anymore? That, was that a special program?
Um, to be honest, I'm not sure. I don't know if they're trying to get out of that business or, or what. It just has not been an option right now for us.
As far as the lease versus buy, have you done any kind of cost-benefit analysis to see which one might be?
I don't, because I just got this tonight. I haven't even looked at the lease. Yeah, I haven't even really seen it. It just came in.
Yeah, I've, I've seen the, the quotes on the sale, but this is new to me too.
Yeah, so, so we can certainly have her back in January if you'd like to discuss it further. And I know the Finance Board will start looking at them as well.
Uh, next meeting would be the 7th?
I think it's January 7th is the first meeting in January, yes.
Sure, why don't we get her on the agenda then? And by then, I'm sure we can get some kind of cost-benefit analysis versus lease versus buy to see which one would be.
Sure.
Most beneficial.
Well done.
And will she, you think she'll provide another, another lease? Is this the only one that she would?
I don't know. So she did say in her cover letter that she reached out to a few, but only one gave her a response, so. I don't know if there are additional companies. I don't know the, that specific handicap van, how many places. I, I would say, I'm sure some are not too willing to lease it just because of the upkeep and the requirements on it, but I don't know.
Well, if it's like leasing any other vehicle, you're responsible for the upkeep on the vehicle and then you're given so many miles.
Right.
If you go over, you owe, if you're on day, there's more. It's surprising that the folks that gave her the quotes for the sale couldn't convert that to a lease option as well.
Just one. So Royale Limo gave her an original quote. They are listed in here in the original paperwork. So then they gave her a quote for the lease. But they were the only ones.
So, Mr. Watson, any questions?
Uh, no.
Seconded then?
So, as far as the financing end of it, which we probably wouldn't have to finance this anyway, right? If we were to buy it?
Correct. Well, again, it depends. If, if it's something you want to use free cash on and buy outright.
And the lease, the payment's going to be less on the lease, I would imagine, than on, to buy it out anyway, unless we paid upfront, you know what I mean? Like Bill said, I know it's a thing on vehicles that if the more miles, if you go over the miles, the lease becomes null and void. So we really need to know how many miles they put on a year and weigh the miles, what they put on it and what they allow. That's the biggest thing.
Right.
Because that may not be worth leasing if they're putting too many miles a year on it and.
Exactly.
25,000 miles per year is what the lease will cover.
And you know how many they put on in a year?
I don't.
Uh, I've got a good idea, because.
60,000 divided by.
Yeah, how many years did they have it?
But they didn't get it with miles on it already?
The current van is.
Seven years old and they are at their 60,000 mile checkup.
So 60,000 divided by seven.
They're not even putting that out there.
Right, so that lease may be worth it. So maybe she can get the information on, try to get more information on the lease?
Well, so I'll say, it looks like the only difference with the lease is we're just paying it over five years instead of upfront. It's the same overall price.
But at the current average mileage per year, they need to look at a low mileage lease, which is going to be significantly different than 25,000 miles a year.
Right. But I don't know, I don't think this is a true lease. It looks like they're just taking the purchase price and dividing it over 60 months. So we'll have to get some more information on that because it's the same, it's just spreading that same $71,000 payment over five years.
Will this have to go, this would have to go to a town meeting vote?
Yes.
At the next annual town meeting?
Yes, with the capital plan, yep. So if it's, if we're doing a lease and that requires a different vote of town meeting, or if it's just a capital article, then we just put it in like the normal capital requests.
And they wanted this last year, if I remember, right?
They wanted it, but then they took it off the plan because they had the van out there that was given to us. So they decided to hold off for another year. The Council on Aging decided to hold off.
Right, because they were getting it for a buck, so. You couldn't beat that price.
Do they get to keep that van or does it have to go back?
No, this van is now ours. They gave it to us. They turned the title over to us.
Is it worth, is it worth anything?
I would say probably.
I was gonna, I would think so.
Yeah, there's probably some resale value in it.
It's not that old and it doesn't have a lot of miles. And those vans are typically pretty easy to fix.
Right, but I will say, it's, it's similar to the police cruises. There's a lot, there's a lot of idle miles on it. The van will go to a museum and just sit outside and idle while the patrons are inside. They'll go to a shopping mall, a doctor's appointments. So it idles a lot.
That's what kills the answer.
Versus mileage.
What we do there is we just put it out of surplus and do what we've done before.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we could surplus it.
Get a, you know, I was told I couldn't get the money we got for a couple of things. We got more than we expected, so.
Yeah. So I guess we'll get her on the agenda. And by that time, hopefully we'll have some more answers that we can better know which way to move. Uh, I think we have time, 25 minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, next item for discussion, possible vote would be Caitlin Guilfoyle to present a proposal for a new playground at the Pines. Mr. Guilfoyle here. Step up.
Hi. I'm Caitlin Guilfoyle for Cannon Hill Road Extension.
Yeah, Mike Houghton from the Rec Committee, One Valley Farm Road.
So I have been working with the Rec Committee over the past couple of months in hopes to submit a CPC application for a new playground equipment and structures down at the Pines. I've done pretty extensive research. I've contacted a few different companies. And I have looked into the different things that would be needed for a new, new playground. And I would like your endorsement for submitting a CPC application, which is due on Friday.
Quick. Mr. Watson, any questions, comments?
No, I, I don't. Sounds like she's done her research.
Yes.
I would ask her to present what she's researched. I would ask her to tell you more about what she's researched.
Well, absolutely.
I, I've spoken to you on the phone.
Yes.
You know I have my, my support. Anything I can do to help you to put it together, I'm there. So you've got a green light with me.
Thanks. For more information, if I, the, the setup that I would propose would be two main structures. One, that's recommended for kids two, ages two through five. One that's recommended for ages five through 12. A swing set, a big kid swing set of four swings. A T-swing for, for two toddler swings, an additional climbing structure. And then we'd also be applying for the wood fiber mulch and the edging that would be required for the playground.
What's the estimated cost?
So I'm still waiting on estimates for, there's a couple different companies that I'm kind of putting together all their estimates. But the structures would be around like $80,000. And then the additional costs, I'm not quite sure on the actual cost yet. I'm just waiting for like the fencing bid to come back and all that stuff. And then the other thing that we had looked into, which I spoke to Denise last week, that we have to pay for the company to build it, rather than do a community build, because, I believe it's because of liability, because it's on public land. So that, the cost of building would also be something that would be required.
Will it be similar to the ones they just recently put down at Washington Park?
Yep, so it's actually the same company that, that built that. It's the same man that I'm talking to, I believe.
Is it going to be located in the same areas currently?
Yep, so the footprint is the same, except it would extend back 10 feet in the back, but it doesn't disrupt any of the trees that are already there. Everything would fit, it's just blown out 10 feet to allow for the clearance for those swings.
Okay, and you're taking this on as a separate CPC project apart from the Rec Committee, the Pines Committee and any other committee in town?
So the Recreation Committee is submitting it. I basically came to the Rec Committee in October and we've been working together on it. I just kind of did some of the background information, the background legwork to submit this.
So the Rec Committee is taking this on? Did you have a question, Mr. Watson?
Yes. Any, any thoughts to use in the Woody boat tech construction of it?
Ed, I think the, the biggest issue really would boil around to the safety elements for it. So the company, we, we thought it'd be best to go through companies that produce these products for use, for kids, for durability and also safety. There's a lot of requirements now around those kind of things.
So what you just said is, is true. And also warranty. They, you're not going to get the warranty having like volunteers or an outside company unless they're hired through the company you've been talking to. So that's another big thing. And like you said, liability. But when I was talking to Caitlin on the phone, one of her concerns was how are we going to get the old set out? And I had told her the highway took the one out in Washington Park for us. We asked them and they took care of it. I can't promise it, but I would think we could ask them. And if push came to shove and they couldn't, I would go take it out. And the other part that she needed help with was putting the wood chips in. They're going to buy it with the CPC money. And I said, if we can't get the highway to dump it in there, I would do it and get some volunteers. It's going to have to be volunteers to spread that. Or what we did at the Bagnol is I brought in the, the prisoners and the prisoners did it. So one way or another, we can get it done, I'm sure. But I think that was her, your biggest hurdles, you were saying, right?
Yeah.
And to clarify, the ones at the Washington, am I correct when I say it's just basically one unit?
They have two, two units as well.
You're trying to get one more for the toddlers and one more for the bigger, to separate the sizes, right? Is what you're thinking?
Yeah, at Washington Park, there are two separate structures with a swing set. The addition, at the Pines, it would be, they're not the same exact design, but it would be two structures for different ages.
Right.
And then there's an additional, there's the big swing set and then there's an additional swing set and additional smaller climbing structure.
And as I told you on the phone, I'm not trying to be the bearer of bad news. And people come out, when it first starts, everyone's gunning home to do it. And then they fizzle, fizzle, fizzle. So as I said, we buy land in this town like crazy. Let's get the right amount together, let's get it done and let's do whatever we need to do to have the right people put it together. Because the volunteers, it's a big project, you know, in, in what have you. So I think we should try and go that route and let, let the companies do what they do best.
I agree.
So this will be another project that the Rec Committee is taking on?
That is correct, yeah. Caitlin brought it before us. As someone who's used the playground as herself and now bringing her kids there, realized it was the same equipment, but a lot more aged and a lot tougher shape, which we all know. So, yeah, we, we did, we did say we would support it and, and help her move it forward.
But you're taking, the Rec Committee is taking on the project?
That is correct, Bill.
Great. So can we get the Rec Committee on the agenda for the 7th or the 17th to discuss this project as well as all other projects that you currently have on your plates? We know, so that we can get an idea, gauge where we're going. We've just had another season go by and just like to see more progress and, and some kind of template that gives us an idea of a timeline of completion on a lot of these items.
Yeah, absolutely, Bill, yeah.
I know it's been tough for you. We've asked you to, you know, come to these meetings on a number of occasions and you've had some personal issues. And hopefully to resolve now and we can get back to the business of serving the community as best as we can and getting that.
That, that hasn't been the issue, Bill. The issue is around prevailing wages requirements are killing the, the price component of what's been set forth.
Oh, no, 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 no. Your inability to, to come before the board, I was told.
I've been asked traditionally, so I'm happy to.
Oh, great. Terrific.
Yes. So Caitlin, who, who do you have that would run the project? Like who would you put in charge to run it? Or who would the Rec put in charge to run this project? Because coordinate, you know, getting the contractors out there to do it and getting, to do all the coordination. Do you have anyone in mind that you're thinking of doing that at all? Or someone on the committee or?
Yeah, well, at this point, Bill, we're, we're more aimed at trying to get the proposal in front of the CPC to get approval for that. And then once we know, you know, with their, their guidance and approval, if we get that, then it would be, you know, then scoping out the requirements for timeline and who would run it.
Right. And the reason I'm bringing this up now is because I'm on board. I'm 100% on board. I, I wouldn't believe that board wouldn't be on board. But waiting, waiting to that point and then starting to go then, starting to go then, you know what I'm saying, now we're behind the eight ball. I'd rather get out of the gate knowing who's going to be in charge of it, who's going to do it, who's going to run it, et cetera, and we're going out of the gate and getting this thing put together. That's how my thought was.
Well, maybe we can make this easy if we designate.
Just speak first.
Sure, go ahead.
So with the CPC, I mean, once a proposal is given to CPC and it's approved, all the work is done, all it's a matter of putting it up to bid at that point. The company would, you know, we would have the specs, we would have the design, it's just a matter of, and MEH O'Brien is on the state bid list. So pretty much town meeting would come in, hopefully support it, and then we could get everything ready to go, July 1st, they're ready to just install it.
Right, and my point.
There's not as much of a need to.
No, no, but my point is someone from the town to go out and make sure it got installed, right? Someone to make sure that the wood chips get delivered and to organize the actual project. I didn't know if they had someone in mind to do that.
A point person?
That's it.
A foreman, project manager.
I don't think, I don't think you have enough in your employ, I don't think you want to be going down there. I shouldn't speak for you, but.
I see what you're getting at, though. Okay. Yeah, I can't imagine anyone on the board wouldn't support that, especially anyone who's been down to that playground recently. It is some of those, it's just downright dangerous is what it is. There should be yellow caution tape on some of those things. So I'm glad to see you step up and try to make the place a little bit better. Thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah, down there, I don't know if you guys can build this into your proposal, but the pavilion needs work. I know there's some rot in the pavilion, I know it needs some roof and shingle work or what have you. As I said, if you're going full, let's get the whole package done, you know what I'm saying? We spend a million dollars to buy a piece of land sometimes, 700 grand, let's just, let's get the thing done, so when we go in there, it's done. At the same token, the pavilion's fixed, you know what I'm saying?
So what you're saying is, can they be more inclusive in their project than just the playground?
Yeah, I would go for everything, that's just me.
With not a lot more to go.
Whatever it needs, you know what I'm saying? If we're going to do it, let's do it, and if the pavilion needs work and it's by there, let's take care of it. We don't have, we don't have anyone in town that can do it, so this is our chance to get it done.
Anything else, Selectman Watson?
No, that sounds like a good idea, get an estimate on that also. That shouldn't be too, that shouldn't be too expensive.
No, that shouldn't be. Shouldn't is the key word, Ed.
Well, maybe it's too much thinking, maybe it's a good point to start thinking about relocating that dog park that's behind the ball field right now.
I would say just keep in mind, though, the community preservation requests are due this week. So they've already done the work on the playground. You know, maybe if they could add some work in for the pavilion, that's, but I don't know much you can add to this request.
Okay. You better get it done by Friday, because I know the teacher in that class, he's tough.
Just support it.
Okay, so I will make a motion to support the project put through by Caitlin Gilfoyle and the Rec to do the Pines project swing set improvements, or whatever we want to call it, pavilion, whatever, playground improvements, and that would be my request.
We have a motion. I'll second that motion. We have a motion to second any further discussion on it. Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Congratulations.
I will forward your letter of support that you can include in your submission.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. What do you think we can reasonably discuss here?
Do some of the votes, if you'd like.
Be a good idea. Maybe we'll go right to the votes of the board minutes from the November 5th, 2018 meeting.
They look to be in order, I'll move for passage.
There are motions.
Second.
A second, any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Yep.
Minutes from the November 13th, 2018 meeting.
Yeah, those also look to be in order, I'll move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Okay, authorize a board member to sign payroll and bill warrants for 1925, 122718. I know I'm going to be in town, I mean, I have no plans to go anywhere, so.
I think Ed's away.
I'll be away, I'll make a motion, we have Bill O'Neill sign the payroll and the warrants at 1227.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? What time, you here all day?
Well, I'll let you know that week when the warrants are done, because Monday and Tuesday are a holiday, most likely they'll be done on the Friday before, but I won't know that until that week.
All right, just when I'm knocking on my counter.
So it can be anytime that week, up until Thursday. But I'll touch base with you.
Vote to approve and sign the following liquor license renewals and get through this. I've gone through them, I found nothing that's out of place. Has anyone else had a chance to review them, and did anybody else find anything that they would like to further discuss? Because I'd like to take them in their entirety.
Yeah, I did just one question on Cedar Dale. I know they've had a change of managers up there, is that noted on the paperwork? I know we received a copy of the former, last year's paperwork, but it doesn't indicate a new manager up there.
Oh, yeah, I'll actually revise that. That came in actually after I printed the licenses, so.
The change of management?
Yep, so I'll revise that and have you re-sign. So as in the past, I would ask you to vote them contingent upon receipt of all paperwork. We're still waiting on one fire inspection, and a couple insurance certificates have not come in, so. Provided they have all requirements in, by December 31st, we will release the license.
I'll make a motion that we approve. You want to do them all at once, or one at a time?
And safe of expediency, I suggest we do them en masse unless there's a reason to do them individually.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license renewals. I'll read them, 97 Liquors, Groveland Market, Jerry Variety, Nyrods Incorporated, Nichols Village, Pub 97, Tea Garden, Cedar Dale Swim Club, Groveland Fairways.
I'll second that.
Contingent upon receipt of all documents.
Right.
By December 31st, 2018. We have a motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
We have votes to approve and sign the Class II used car license renewals. We also looked at that and found them to be in order, I found nothing to be out of place. Did anyone else find anything that might cause concern?
There was, there was one that I, unless I missed it, I didn't see the insurance, and that was.
Some of them were. Much like the liquor license, I think these votes would be contingent upon the remittance of proper paperwork by December 31st, 2018, is that correct?
Yes, and auto repairs, et cetera, has not given us anything.
I think that was the one that I didn't see anything on.
I believe they're looking to change owners, so they did not submit any renewal paperwork with the existing owner. So I have them on there, provided they do come through, otherwise we may have a transfer hearing in early January for the new owner.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the Class II used car license renewals contingent upon receipt of required paperwork for, and those on the list, South Salem Street Corporation doing businesses, Price Right Automotive, Greenwood Auto Body, Richard Allen Greenwood, Groveland Auto Repair and Sales, Auto Repairs, et cetera, and Cornerstone Motors, LLC, Daniel P., Nian.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Okay, vote to approve and sign the following common particular license renewals. Can I have looked through all these? And these also, some of them are missing some documents, also would be contingent upon successful remittance of all necessary documentation by December 31st, 2018.
Correct, so Jeff and Maria's will not comply with the December 31st, they do not reopen until the spring, but it's been a longstanding tradition, we approve their license, they give us the paperwork, then we would release the license sometime in May when they come back. Otherwise, the rest of them will provide everything to open or to continue in business as of January 1st.
They're really, other than Cedar Dale, really the only seasonal one we have?
Correct, so they do not operate until the spring, so they really don't need a license on January 1st.
I also looked through these, I didn't find anything to be out of the ordinary.
No, I think the only thing we're missing is a couple insurance.
Insurance certificates.
Most of the policies are like a January 1st, so they just haven't gotten their new certificates.
So I'll make a motion to approve the, and sign the following common particular license renewals from Nicole's Village, One Nicole's Way, Tefed, Clifford, TD Clifford, doing business at Pub 97, 935 Salem Street, JNS Restaurant Corp, doing business at Tea Garden Restaurant, 904 Salem Street, Cedar Dale Swim and Tennis Club, Groveland, 20 Bear Hill Road, Robert Acme, doing business at Groveland Fairways, 156 Main Street, Unlimited Perks Caff Inc., 921 Salem Street, Next Dine LLC, doing business at Next Dine at Chesterton Caff, 867 St., Riverside Pizza LLC, 180 Main Street, Pawtucket Regional District, 253 Main Street, Conservation Commission, doing business at the V.C. Memorial Park, 201 Washington Street, F&amp;M Company LLC, doing business at Your Place and Ours, 8 Elm Park, Pizza Grove LLC, 997 St., and Jeff and Maria's Ice Cream and Food at 928 Salem Street.
Great, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second, any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
And again, just to make that clear, Bill, that was contingent upon?
Yep, on Jeff and Maria's, and?
And all of them.
All the others, right.
So you could probably, your first candidate is here, you could probably start if you'd like.
Yeah, we've only got a couple of minutes, and there's nothing really left to burn here that we can successfully get through. So our first candidate in our interview process for a highway superintendent position for the town of Groveland will be a Xander Niles, I believe. Mr. Niles, step forward. Thank you for coming this evening, we appreciate your time. Oh, we, in the sake of fairness, I think I should mention this, just so there's total transparency, if anyone on the board should know one of these individuals personally, I think it would be, it should be disclosed at this point in time, just so there's total transparency amongst the board and the individual candidates in front of us. And if a vote were to be taken on an individual candidate, that we would have a personal relationship, I would ask that member to recuse themselves from the vote. And with that, I'll ask Mr. Selectman Watson, do you know any of these candidates personally?
No, I don't.
Mr. Selectman Dundee, know any of these candidates personally?
Yeah, I know Mr. Niles, but I don't know him to be to the point of friendship, going out to dinner, anything other than I know of him. I know his uncle, I don't know him other than that relationship with him. And any decision I would make tonight would not be waived on the experience of however I know him.
I appreciate your candidness. Would you like to begin the discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I read your interview. It seems like you have some experience in this field. Administrative ends of things, that's the computer and the grants and filings with the water waste management and all that. Do you have a problem with any of that?
I don't have a problem with doing any of it.
Yeah.
It'll be a learning curve for me.
Okay.
Not so much the filing of the paperwork part of it, but the learnings of certain different things, the way things work inside town.
Yeah.
But I'm willing to learn that, and hopefully we can go forward with it from that position.
Okay. We are going to, hopefully, hopefully, turn this job position ultimately to a DPW, so we are going to be trying to go that way. Unfortunately, the way our government's set up, we can't do it right now, we've got to go to town meeting, we've got a long process to do that. So down the road, if we went that route, would you have a problem being able to do the water in the sewer and the parks and the rec and take this bigger picture on? You feel confident you'd be able to do that?
I feel confident I'd be able to do it. As far as the water in the sewer end of it would go, I probably would need a little more education and training, which I'm open for. I currently don't have any background in sewer, as you know, and wastewater. You need a license for that, and I don't have that. But it is something I'd be willing to get if need be down the road.
Okay, I'm probably going to be the worst one to ask questions, that's just me. How do you handle stress? Like, some people get all stressed out, yell and scream, some people handle it good?
Every situation's different. You can walk into something and be stressed out to the max, and an outcome could be completely different than a low-stress situation. The way I go about it is I try to keep a cool, level head and get through the issue at hand and deal with it accordingly.
What is one of your major reasons you want this position?
It would be a good stepping stone for me to further my career. I grew up in the town of Groveland, I'd like to come back and offer the town of Groveland what I have to offer, and Groveland has offered me a lot over my life, and I think it would be a great opportunity just to come back and be part of the town again.
Okay. I know I've read some of these on your resume, so I'm just going to go through them. It's probably kind of premature to ask this question, but seeing what you said different Groveland and you know our highway department, do you have any ideas, knowing what you know from being in Groveland, what you'd do to change the department? Do you have anything that you, management skill or anything that you would do to change our department, or what you think you could add to our department?
I think if we can work together as a unit, team cooperation amongst the boards, also with the selectmen, provide a positive work atmosphere, somewhere where people enjoy coming to work every day, get along, and we can make some productive headway. There's also some other things that I am aware of, that I could bring forward, that would save the town money if we could look into it. It's an agency called Loring Industries, they're in northern Maine. Basically, they specialize in restoring equipment to a point that's almost brand-new. And it's a big cost savings, and they're known throughout the world now, and I think it's something that could save the town a lot of money in the long run.
That's good. I guess, how would you say your people skills are, dealing with people?
I deal with that currently quite a bit in my job, my current job. Not so much as I think I would in the town of Groveland, but you have to handle each situation individually, be professional about it. There is an outcome to every situation, it may not be the outcome everybody wants to hear, but there is an outcome.
Right.
And if you can get on the same page and respect people and their opinions and their ideas and work together, I think you can come to a pretty good resolution on an issue.
Do you have any kind of skills in, like, construction management, construction carpentry? So if this morphed into a DPW, you might be doing building maintenance, let's just say, or in charge of building maintenance, so over and above?
I'm able to read blueprints, not the best, but I can manage my way through them. I understand. I understand the building concepts of homes, like construction. I built homes when I was in high school with my uncle. I just recently finished remodeling my own house in West Newbury that was built in 1888, brought it up to all the current building standards on my own, which passed Building Inspection and Code in West Newbury. So, as far as that goes, I, I think if, if need push come to shove, and I had to go about and get my building contractor's license, that's fine, we could do that, I'd be willing to do that. I have a little bit of experience in hazardous waste removal, asbestos, chemicals of that nature, so I do, I do have that in my background as well.
Good. Let me see here. Do you plan on being hands-on?
To a certain point.
Okay.
I think there's a point in this position where you actually do have to step back a little bit and be a manager or supervisor.
Yep.
But you also have to be willing to help your employees.
Right.
And not dictate what has to be done, but give them a hand if they need it.
And the last one I will ask, do you think that you can be stern enough to manage in a, with a stern enough manner to get the respect from the crew? So, your boss, you know, like, you just kinda said it, you're not an equal, they're gonna respect you, you're the other guy, you're the mean guy.
Yeah.
How would you get there?
I think, I think most people that know me, know me as a pretty easygoing person. But at the same time, I think if you're in the position that this is gonna be, you need to have a backbone and be able to put your foot down and, and get the business done that needs to be done.
Yep.
And take it from there, and if there's an issue with that, then we'll, we can handle it accordingly, and there's plenty of agencies within town that can help you do that if there isn't, if it goes bigger than what it is.
Okay. I won't bother you anymore, but thank you for answering all my questions, and you satisfied me, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Selectman Dunn, Selectman Watson?
Yes. You, you can explain your supervisory experience with, with Mass Highway?
Currently, I'm a Highway Maintenance Foreman III, which is a grade below an area supervisor. I currently run a PVD depot, which would be sections of 95 and Route 1, which is very busy sections of road. I could have anywhere between one to two people on a daily basis working under me, up to 10 to 15, maybe 20, depending on the job that we're doing and where we're working. It all depends. We're very short-staffed, so we kinda make do with what we have and get done with what we have. But as, as far as my foreman's position there and my supervisory skills or my supervisory position, that's pretty much a day-to-day thing, I assign basic tasks, I go out and work with my crew if I have to, respond to calls if I have to, paperwork, some, not so much budget items, but I do keep track of how much product we might be using in the season, and I report those numbers, and so on, things of that nature.
Thank you. With your, with your job as a highway superintendent, you, you have to deal with certain laws and rules and regulations. Can you explain, explain how would you deal with the Architectural Review Board, some of their regulations?
I'm not gonna tell you exactly, I can't give you a blunt answer on that, because I wouldn't know without actually talking with them what they would be looking for.
Do you know what the Architectural Review Board, do you know what they're responsible for?
I don't, to be honest with you.
Thank you. How about, can you explain the MUTCD guidelines that you'd be, you'd be working under as a highway superintendent?
Yep. It, it's, it's outlaid in a book, manual, depending on the speed of the road, the type of work you're doing, how many lanes are in the roadway, that the MUTCD dictates that type of signage, whether or not you need a police detail. Basically, it's a safety book, and it takes a lot of liability off the community, as long as it's followed correctly.
How about, like, the, like, the high signs, are you familiar with that?
Yep.
Under those guidelines?
Forty-eight by forty-eight, fluorescent orange.
How about, as a highway superintendent, you'll, you'll be using some state funds, can you explain it, explain our Chapter 90 money?
Chapter 90 money is, it's, it's given to municipalities to improve roadways, structures, sidewalks, things of that nature. It's 100% reimbursable, reimbursable to the community, and you can use it to, you know, get roads paved, you can purchase some equipment with it, I don't really feel that's a great way, great avenue to go with it, unless you're purchasing pavement preservation equipment, such as hot top maintenance, hot box, things of that nature. But that's about what I think of that.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
What would you describe as your strengths?
My strengths are, I'm a positive individual, I'm outgoing, I can pretty much get along with anybody, and I'm willing to work with anybody to get through a problem or a situation.
What would you say are your biggest weaknesses?
Not having a lot of experience in budgeting. I think we all have weaknesses, I just, I don't really know exactly what they would be.
I'm not looking for personal weaknesses, like, you know, you're a smoker, or you chew gum too fast. Weaknesses as far as your profession, where do you see your weaknesses as far as that
Um, there's always room for improvement, I think, and...
Nobody's perfect, absolutely.
You, you could have a weakness one day, and the next day it changes. I don't think there's one, I don't think there's one generic weakness that I have, but everything can be improved upon further.
You're currently at the Mass DOT, you've been there since July 2010, over eight-and-a-half years. What do you like most about it?
I've had a lot of opportunities with the state. I started as an equipment operator, and I moved up to an equipment operator two, and now I'm a Highway Maintenance Foreman III, so there's, there's been a lot of opportunity for me. They've provided me with quite a bit of education, classes, training, certificate programs. I like the everyday atmosphere of Mass DOT. You never really know exactly what the day-to-day operations are gonna be, and that's something that I enjoy. There's no set regimen, more or less, it's, it's, what happens, happens during the day, we'll take care of it.
Never the same thing any day?
Nope, never.
What do you dislike the most?
The lack of leadership. The fact that when people have ideas, they're not allowed to go with those ideas and improve on them, and I think that's something as, if I came to the town, I'd be very open to that, 'cause just, my idea may not be the best idea, so why not listen to the other ones and see if we can come to a common ground and make it work?
Now, if you were to be given this position, I, I guess you may be supervising a family member. How do you deal with that?
Like I told Denise in my original interview, my current position with the state is a maintenance foreman. My father-in-law actually falls under sometimes my work as well. So, there's a difference that you have to draw between work and family, and if that's an issue, then, and it becomes a bigger issue, I will respectfully step back and ask for the board's help or town council's help and get an issue resolved that way, 'cause there is a conflict of interest that can occur.
How do you deal with an employee who's substandard?
You have to be positive, and you have to create a positive work environment for that person. If, if they're coming in every day and they're, they're being beat up because everything's negative and they're hearing all that negative talk, then they're not gonna try to improve themselves. You also need to have a plan in place that will help them further, or bring them up to a better standard or higher standard, maybe a couple-step program where they're on a review program, weekly reviews, monthly reviews, even up to a year review. And I think everyone in town, or every employee should be on a review basis, and if they're substandard, then it needs to be addressed and brought to the current working condition because they're expected to be there.
You currently supervise anywhere from three to 20 employees, how would you describe your management style? We have a very diverse group, age, background, ethnicity, how would you describe yourself in dealing with a very diverse workforce?
I guess basically it's, it's, I'm easygoing, I like to take a hands-on approach sometimes if need be. I also feel that we're all adults, and if you're given simple instructions, you should be able to follow simple instructions. I shouldn't have to be able, I shouldn't have to watch over people, a little oversight is necessary, but that's also why you have foremen and, and that nature, to be able to assist you in that process.
What are your current hours, what kinda hours you put in?
Our regular basic hours are 7:30 to 4:00, Monday to Friday. Anything after 4:00 is overtime, or after 40 is overtime, and in the wintertime, it's pretty much non-stop, depending on the weather.
This position could actually be, you're on call 24/7/365. It's gonna be different than a Monday to Friday, nine-to-five job. How do you think you'll adapt to that?
Adapting to that's not an issue. Currently, in my position, the phone can ring at any moment, and it's, at that point, it's my decision, more or less in the summertime, if I wanna answer the phone for an overtime call, but in the wintertime, it's not, it's not a question, it's, yeah, you have to answer the call. So, it's not gonna change much, I'm used to the phone ringing.
Well, here in the summer, if we get a whirlwind go by and it takes down 72 trees, and we get to ignore it?
No, you don't.
You gotta pick it up.
Absolutely.
And you gotta get into action.
And that's, that's not an issue with me. I understand that comes with this position, and, and that's something I've accepted and I'm willing to work with.
Describe, if you can, your most difficult assignment. Your boss is giving you something that you've initially deemed is done near impossible, but somehow you got through it.
I actually, not too long ago, asked the crew to get off the roadway, because they were put in an unsafe predicament by another foreman, and I didn't feel it was safe for them to do that. Whether it was the right option, I feel it was, I feel possibly could've saved somebody's life, if not the motor and public's life, and it was just a fact of trying to get the job done, to go a little bit further without the correct safety setup, and to me, that wasn't the correct thing to do, so I, I told, and I put my neck out on the line for my crew, we're gonna do it.
I noticed from your resume that you've moved around in a number of different occupations. You have an AD in criminal justice, you have some carpentry background, you have some law enforcement background, then you've gone into kind of a commercial driver and then kind of morphed into this Mass DOT. Explain your evolution from where you started as, you know, earning your degree in criminal justice in 2003, to going on to law enforcement, to, to where you are today. It's kind of a, it's, it's a funny road, I, I'll tell you one, not traveled very often.
Mm-hmm. Well, as you know, a criminal justice degree from Northern Essex. I was working for the town of West Newbury as a dispatcher. I've also worked in the town of Groveland for my uncle, GKD and Sons Construction, for numerous years in high school and through college. I decided that I wanted to move on, and that's when I started working for the West Newbury Police Department as a dispatcher, and when I was working there, I was appointed to a part-time reserve police officer for the town as well. That line of work kind of intrigued me for a short period of time. I attended the New Hampshire Full-Time Police Academy, where I became a certified New Hampshire Police Officer. I was fortunate enough to try, apply for a job in the town of Antrim, New Hampshire, which didn't work out. It wasn't the right suit for me, it didn't fit, I didn't, I wasn't comfortable there. I was away from my family, and I didn't like it, so I came back down here and I continued to work for the West Newbury Police Department, and I decided to obtain my CDL license and try something different. And that's when I started working for the environmental company, TMC Environmental, Commonwealth Tank out of Wakefield, and I got my feet wet in some different areas there, operating equipment, environmental waste removal, hazardous waste removal. I enjoyed those jobs, it just, it didn't seem like a career to me, and I happened to get into an application with the Mass DOT, and it was a good fit. It's local, it's a, it's a well-paying job, and there's, there is room for improvement if need be, and it has been a good career, and I, I liked the choice I made going there. But I think now, at this point in my life, with my wife, my two sons, I live local, I'd like to come back to the community that I was born and raised in, and provide for the community a service that I can.
Terrific. I think I've exhausted all my questions.
I could follow up.
Absolutely.
Can you explain your, your experience in budgeting and planning? Obviously, the highway department, they have a budget, you have to do planning, capital planning or expenditures, how can you explain your experience in budgeting and planning?
I, I can be 100% honest with you, I don't have any. I'm not gonna sit here and lie, it's not fair for myself to do that, but I don't have a lot of experience, or if any, in doing that.
Did, in preparation for, for this job, any interviews, you interviewed before with the Finance Director, Personnel Director, did you look over any of the town bylaws, to see, be familiar with some of the regulations as far as the highway, like, particularly like with, with drainage? Did you look over any of the bylaws in preparation for this?
I, I haven't actually looked over any of the bylaws. I know that Groveland's a small wastewater, not wastewater, but a stormwater town. I, I guess, more or less, that's about all that I can explain on, or expand on.
Okay, how about, do you have any, any kind of a background in, like easements, you know, if you have to, if you have to do, do a project over, run over somebody's property as far as easements, do you have any experience with that, or, or even some kind of an engineering background?
To be honest with you, where I am now, our easements change, can change within a mile of each other. Some easements might be 10 feet, some easements might be 25... Some easements might be ten feet, some easements might be twenty-five feet. And I've even seen easements go into people's backyards because of a set of old railroad tracks that the state owns. So it could vary depending on which road you're on or what the setbacks are for each section of road. And as far as an engineering background, no, I don't have an engineering background.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Selectman Dunn, any follow-up questions?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Mr. Niles, I thank you very much for your time and your efforts to come here and your interest in applying for this job. Town certainly needs capable people, and we obviously have more candidates to interview. And I think someone will get back to you one way or another, for sure. But I do not believe it'll be tonight. More than likely, it won't be tonight.
It is.
I can almost promise you it probably won't be tonight.
That's fine. Understandable.
But again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay. Can we recess for two minutes? It'll be two minutes. It's not till seven forty-five, so we have a, we have a moment. Intervening for the current vacant highway superintendent position, Mr. Paul Kirby. Thank you for coming this evening, sir.
Thank you for having me.
I appreciate your time and effort in joining us, coming out in such a cold winter's night and being here with us.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Let's start the questioning this time with Selectman Watson, if you don't mind.
No. I read over the resume. I just got a few questions. Explain, explain your experience in budgeting and planning. Budgeting, obviously, the highway department, you've got to do budgeting for the upcoming year. You've got to keep to a budget and planning. Can you explain, like, planning for a new equipment and things like that? Can you explain your experience with that?
Yep. When I was a supervisor, I was responsible for a division's budget, the street division's budget underneath Public Works. I was responsible for most, all the line items on there. There was a few line items that Town Hall took care of, like the rubbish, because that was under contract and everything. But all the other line items, I was, it was, it was my responsibility to make sure that we stayed within budget parameters on that and to make the budget for the next year. If I saw that the numbers needed to be adjusted, that was my responsibility to do that. As for equipment, that went through our equipment supervisor. He, we do a capital outlay, most replacement every ten years. And between me and him, we'll make an assessment of the equipment that's up for replacement and see if we want to push that off to the next year or the year after and what prioritize, which pieces of equipment I wanted to replace. I was also responsible for doing the specs with the equipment supervisor on that.
In preparation for this job, did you, did you look at, take a look at the town bylaws and see what laws and rules and regulations that the town uses as an example? Like for drainage purposes, the town has bylaws. Did you look at any of that?
I did not look at the bylaws, but I did look at the proposed budget for FY nineteen.
Good. Explain, explain your expenditure or use of Chapter ninety money. You have to deal with, deal with money that comes from the, comes from the state. Explain the use of that.
Yep. Most of, all of our Chapter ninety money goes right into our roads, into repaving, any drainage improvements that needs to be done on certain roads that they need to be paved. And then, working with the Director of Operations, selecting which streets prioritize, we use a pavement management system, which kind of prioritizes our streets for us. And then we'll, then I'd go with my list of streets as to which ones we're doing the most maintenance on and maybe bump that one up. And between me and the Director of Operations, we decide which streets we're going to do. And then it was my responsibility to do all the estimates on the streets. So I would go out, estimate all the structures, how much milling is going to be done, how much pavement would be done, and put that into the Chapter ninety spreadsheets that need to be submitted.
What's your familiarity with easements, going across people's property or an engineering background? Do you have any of that?
I don't have an engineering background. I have engineering knowledge. I worked with our town engineers, and I learned a lot from the town engineers. Easements are usually, there's usually a deeded right for the town to go through there. If there's not a deeded right, you're going to have to get permission from a resident in order to go in. If there's a drain line that's not easement, you'd have to get permission or you'd have to go through the process of making that into an easement. I did run into a few years ago, a situation where we put a sidewalk in and the resident wouldn't let us take down a tree. And because the resident wouldn't let us take down a tree, we had to go around the tree. In order to do that, we had to gain easement rights. So Town Council took care of all the paperwork to get the easement rights to put that sidewalk in on their property.
Explain, you have to follow certain rules and regulations. Explain the MUTCD guidelines that you have to follow with the job.
They're pretty standard. You can actually, what I used to have, I used to have an app on my phone that I could look up everything for the signs and everything on that and the regulations, the crosswalk signs, the heights of signs, what signs need to be where, and just all the traffic regulations that the Federal Highway Administration puts in there. I'm pretty familiar with it.
The other one, the other one would be, the Architectural Review Board could explain how you would deal with some of their regulations, how you would write some of that stuff up.
I'm not familiar with it, so that'd be a, something that I would learn through them.
How about, as a, your position now, do you have to do any disciplining of employees?
Not in this current position. As a supervisor, I did.
How would you deal with, explain, just briefly, how would you deal with a, with an employee? Say you've got an employee that keeps coming in late. How would you deal with somebody like that?
First thing I'd do is I'd pull him off to the side by myself and explain to him that he's got to, he or she has to straighten up and stop coming in at a reasonable time. I'd give him kind of a little heads up. Next step, if they continue to do, would be a verbal warning. You give them a verbal warning, and then you document it through an email usually to Personnel or whatever, that you had disciplined them. And then the next steps go up to written, written discipline, and then suspension if needed. I would work directly with Personnel on that, though.
Okay. I'm all set for now. No, thank you.
Selectman Dunn.
So we're in the process, hopefully in a few years, changing this highway over to a DPW. So which is going to be the cemetery, recreation, water and sewer highway. What are your thoughts? Do you think you would be no problem handling all that?
Nope. That's actually the same environment I'm coming out of right now. We are a Department of Public Works with several divisions underneath us, which include equipment, streets, water sewer, forestry, grounds, and electric division.
Okay.
In my role as a supervisor, my direct contact was Director of Operations, and his contact is Director of Public Works, so that's...
Okay. What is your main reason you want this job?
I want to get back into a managerial position, and I like the small-town atmosphere. Groveland definitely has that wonderful little small-town atmosphere, where where I'm coming from is more towards the city atmosphere now. So I just, that's, that's what I'm uncomfortable with.
You have computer skills and administration skills as far as office work, sitting at a desk, doing all that?
Yep. I had to do all that as an administrator, make spreadsheets, write reports.
Yep.
Yep. I was responsible for the division time cards, double-checking the time on the cards, and I had to sign them.
Okay. You talked about the Chapter ninety already. It sounds to me like you have plenty of knowledge with the equipment and repairing it and...
I have, yep. Very good knowledge with equipment and repairs.
Yeah, we touched on that already. It's probably a little premature for me to ask you this, but I don't know if you've done any looking into it. The size town we are in our, our highway department, like I said, you don't have to answer it because it might be premature. Do you have any ideas what you'd do to change it as a manager or for the time being until we go to DPW?
I can't really answer that question, I can't really answer that question until I was actually in to see how the operations work. Everybody has their own operations. All operations work differently.
Yep.
And to see how the operation would work, then I would say, maybe I can adjust here or there, or maybe everything works...
More hands-on.
Yep.
Okay. Would you say you're a good communicator?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have good people skills and good public relations?
Yes. The main part of my job as a supervisor, I had to deal a lot with the public, especially when it comes to snow and ice. That's probably when the worst comes, when the phone starts ringing off the hook.
So do you, how do you handle stress?
Just sit back, take a couple minutes, relax, and then go forth with what you've got to do. Breathe. Just relax.
Do you complete projects on time?
For the most part, yes. Sometimes you do have weather delays or whatever that could set, set projects back, but you do try and set reasonable times lines.
Okay. You talked about the budget already. Would you run a piece of equipment until it's life? Now, let's say we're buying a certain truck. They say it's worth thirty years. Would you try to get to the close thirty years? Or how would you go about that piece of equipment to trade, to trade or get rid of it and get a new one?
Different equipment, depending on what the equipment is and how it's used, the lifespan does change on that. The key to a lifespan of equipment is maintenance on that. If you keep up with the maintenance on that equipment, and I've seen equipment that hasn't been maintained, that is, that is, we have a truck right now that is an absolute piece of junk, and it's only ten years old.
Yep. Okay. Are you a stern manager?
Stern in what?
When you went into a situation, things weren't being done the way you wanted to, stern to the, where the, I know when I, I own my own business and I go to my guys and I say to my guys, hey, listen, I'm not happy with this. I only need, I don't need to yell. I say, guys, I'm not happy with this. They look at me and they get it. You know what I mean? They don't try to push me or, the way I manage, I manage to the point where it's a lot of respect. You know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I would say yes to that.
Some people don't get respect. That's where I'm...
Right. But I believe, I believe a lot in respect. If you treat the guys with respect, then you're definitely going to get a lot more out of them. If you go after them and try and, you know, attack them all the time. As to being stern, yeah, I can be a little bit stern, but I'm going to try and be respectful to them and understand why and just kind of let them know that I'm not happy, but let's see what we can do to fix it.
Okay. Do you plan on being hands-on?
As much as I can, yes.
And production and carpentry skills? Construction knowledge?
Knowledge of it. Just, I have knowledge of it. I wouldn't say I'm a carpenter by any hands, but I do have knowledge of it. I know how to cut wood.
To get a job done?
Yeah.
Okay. And would you be willing to, if there was an area, later on, we went to a DPW or whatever, and you needed more training, would you be willing to go and do the training that you needed for this position?
Absolutely. I've actually done, over my career, I've done tremendous amount of training. I was part of a program out of UMass Lowell called, what used to be called Bay State Roads, and they have something called Road Scholar. I've achieved that twice.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kirby. Let's start off with the experience. Relevant experience anyways. You were Danvers DPW Foreman from two thousand, two thousand fifteen. Tell me what that entails, being a Foreman of the DPW.
When I was a Foreman, that entails being assigned a crew and a job to get done. I was in charge of that crew, so I was assigned a crew of anywhere from three to five guys, given the equipment, and sent out to accomplish a job and get that job done and run the job from beginning to end. And make sure it gets done and gets done correctly and in a timely manner and with good results.
And you spent fifteen years in that capacity before...
As a Foreman, I believe it was only seven years. I'd been with the town for eighteen years, but I progressed up through the ranks. Foreman, I believe I did six or seven years as a Foreman in that position.
The date is two thousand, two thousand fifteen, so it's actually two thousand, two thousand seven?
It would be, no, it'd be like two thousand seven to two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand seven?
Yeah. I'd have to look back and see exactly when I was promoted into that position.
And prior to two thousand seven, you were with...
I was, I was with the same town. I started right at the bottom. I started, I started for the town in two thousand. I started as a truck driver. I went from a truck driver to light equipment operator, light equipment operator, heavy equipment operator, working Foreman, to Foreman, to Supervisor.
Okay. And that's your current role now?
I'm back working as a working Foreman. I stepped back off that position. I was going through a little bit of a life change. I was going through a divorce, actually, and I had to step back because of that.
Your current resume ends at two thousand seventeen, so that's...
Yeah, I'm still employed with the town.
So it's through, present?
Yes. My role as a supervisor was till two thousand seventeen.
Okay. And now as a supervisor, which is your current position?
No, I am currently a working Foreman.
You're currently a working Foreman?
Yeah. I stepped back out of that position.
Okay. And is it lighter responsibilities, less hours?
It's lighter responsibilities, not necessarily less hours.
Lighter responsibility, less hours. This job is basically, there's no, there's no frying pan. You're jumping right into the fire.
Mm-hmm. I've been there.
The heat never goes away here. Or if it does, it's only replaced by frigid cold. How would you handle being on call? Basically, if given this position, twenty-four seven three sixty-five, there, I mean, you'd be like the President of the United States.
Mm-hmm. I've, as a supervisor, that was my role. They gave me a town-issued phone, and when it rang, I answered it.
You mean you currently live in Danvers?
Mm-hmm.
How was the commute?
It's easy. Good. About twenty minutes.
Can you describe for us what some of your greatest strengths on the job would be?
My knowledge of, of street work, drainage work. I've been around it for, for most of my life now, running equipment, doing, just general knowledge of what the work is. I have been in the administrative role, so I do have knowledge of all the administrative aspects of it, writing of the reports, the budget, all that. I've dealt with all that. I've dealt with Personnel.
And what would you consider to be your greatest weaknesses?
My greatest weakness, I would say, is probably sometimes I'm a little too lenient on people. I could be a little bit stronger when it comes to certain actions. You know, I try and be very reasonable to a person and maybe sometimes a little too reasonable when I shouldn't be.
I know you discussed with, I believe with Selectman Dunn... I know you discussed with, I believe with Selectman Dunn. You shared your thoughts with him on personnel. And you advocate almost kind of a written warning system where an employee progresses through to termination. Right now, I'm sure you're well aware that the unemployment rate is so low that finding qualified employees is very difficult. Corporations are also starting to find out that replacing employees can be very expensive. Between the hiring process, interviewing, bringing that employee up to speed, there can be a tremendous amount of lost productivity, inefficiency, and basically you're losing a lot of money during that time. How do you, how do you turn a, an employee around? How do you mentor someone to be, to live up to the standards of the job when they're currently substandard?
Talk with the employee. Usually there's probably something wrong. Maybe he's working in a role that he doesn't feel that he's gaining anything on that role. Maybe he's in the wrong role and you need to direct him towards the right role. Just work with him, educate him. There's plenty of technical classes out there that you can send people to, to learn more. But just work with that employee and find out where he fits. His fit might not be where he is now, and that might be why he's disgruntled. Find a better fit for him.
That's a very good answer, I like that. What's the most number of people you've managed? You say you've you've been assigned, basically you get a task and you're assigned a team or a crew with three to five people in the past. What's the most number of people you have been managing?
As the supervisor, I had, it was either thirteen or fourteen guys under me. And that was all aspects of traffic control with signage and road closures and everything, to drainage, masonry work, snow and ice operations. Also, the refuse removal was underneath me as well.
I don't know if I have any other questions at this time, so I will hand it back over to Selectman Watson for any follow-up questions.
I don't, I don't have any follow-up, thank you.
Selectman Dunn?
No, I think you've answered everything for me pretty thorough and I'm happy with your say.
I as well. I want to thank you for coming, taking the time to visit with us tonight. I appreciate your efforts. And I, we will be in touch one way or another shortly, I'd imagine.
Okay, so should I stick around or?
No, I don't think there'll be any final decision tonight.
Okay.
We're still interviewing other candidates. And I imagine we'd probably like to let this rest in our brains for a little while and
Sure.
digest what we've seen.
Yep, it's definitely, you know, a big role in, it's, I'm sure it's a tough decision on you guys to put the right person in this role.
Well, it'd be nice to to make the right decision on the, on the get-go, hit a home run right out of the gate, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I'm talking to Denise when we did the initial interview, how you guys are progressing towards that Department of Public Works and taking this from an elected position to an appointed position. That's a, that's a big change for, for the town of Groveland.
And we've got big plans for this position.
Yep, it sounds like you've got big plans for the whole town.
And we'd really like to get it right, just so we don't have to do it over again, because as I said, it's, it's time and money.
Yep.
Neither one of which we have the luxury of wasting.
Yep.
So thank you again.
Very understandable.
And appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Yeah.
We've got, I have a few minutes now. It's almost eight fifteen. Well, we certainly can jump into another topic if not. He is, okay. Who moved us along quicker than I thought. Mike, how are you? Merry Christmas. You too. Good evening, Mr. Carroll. Hopefully we won't keep you here that long that you'll need that kind of...
You never always come prepared.
Selectman Dunn just stepped away from a moment, so we'll allow him a brief moment to come back so he doesn't miss any of the questioning or something that may tick off something in his brain to ask. Terrific. So in front of us at the moment, we have our third candidate of the evening, Mr. Rennie Carroll. Comes to us again. Well-experienced and looking to be our next Highway Commissioner, so Selectman Watson, would you like to start the questioning?
Yeah, sure, okay. In in preparation for this, did you, did you look up any of the town bylaws as far as rules and regulations that the Highway Department has to follow? Like, as an example, drainage? Did you look any of that up?
I didn't.
No, okay. Explain your, your experience in in budgeting and planning. Obviously, you've got to follow a budget, prepare the budget, you get the experience in preparing, preparing, planning the budget and expending of funds and a capital plan.
I have lots of experience in planning with Chapter 90, roads, drainage, sewer as well. As far as budgeting for my roads and drainage experience, I'm guessing I would work with the Portis Selectmen on what our goals and aspirations are and where we want to be and work within budgetary guidelines to execute, you know, within those lines to get the job accomplished.
How about your experience with an engineering background, taking abesements, things of that nature?
I do have some engineering experience. I work with many engineers, not only in Portsmouth now, but in in my previous experience in Beverly. I've also even taken engineers under my wing as they come out of school, kind of don't have the field experience, but have the education. I even have many engineers, you know, kind of get critiqued by me about their previous things that they have kind of tried to introduce into our budgets that haven't worked, but other ways that we can find, you know, to utilize those, those things that they, that they come up with. So I, I have a lot of experience working with engineers.
What, what's the difference, you know, the city of Beverly, you're a foreman supervisor and Portsmouth, highway supervisor? What's the difference between the two?
So in Beverly, I, I shared the responsibility with a, I was more of an assistant foreman. In Portsmouth, it's just me.
Well, who, who's over the highway supervisor in Portsmouth?
In Portsmouth, it's the general foreman who oversees all of the highway department. He's the, he's more of a facilities guy than a road guy.
And above him is...
The director.
The director?
Peter Rice, yeah, he's the director.
What, if you touched on Chapter 90, explain the, the regulations under the MUTCD guidelines?
So the regulations under those guidelines dictate signage and safety as far as what would be deployed during construction. It's also, they use those guidelines for lighting, crosswalks, where crosswalks land, tip downs. You know, it's basically a safety MUTCs for signs and safety guidelines.
How about, how about the regulations as far as the Architectural Review Board?
Excuse me, for the what?
Architectural Review Board.
I don't, not really familiar with that.
Okay. Now, you were like, up in Portsmouth, you were like the, who was the director, who was somebody under him, and then there was you. Like, did you do, you didn't do any much budgeting there, that was all done above, above your level?
I did, I work with the committee. We, our evaluations of the roads kind of come from all our departments from... So in, the highway in Portsmouth, I, I don't deal with drainage and sewer like I did in Beverly. But the, as far as roads, you know, dilapidated roads, budgeting for roads that are in just repair, you know, we come up with guidelines along with engineering for where our money will be spent, what we can budget, you know, as far as Chapter 90 and, and so forth. So I, I work with the, the city, the committee on that to come up with a number.
One of the reasons I ask is, I don't see anything under your experience as highway superintendent or highway supervisor in Portsmouth, anything to do with budgeting or, or capital planning, planning, planning for equipment expenditures?
Yeah, the, the capital planning stuff would be done with a construction supervisor there. But again, I do, I go out and grade the roads, so we, I work with him to, you know, collaboratively to come up with, you know, our, our grading system for the roads, because we really don't have one like we did in Beverly. So as far as the budgeting part of that, like I said, we work with the town, we work with the city, the committee to, to come up with where they want to spend the money there, really.
Who draws up the, the highway budget in Portsmouth?
It would be the operations as well as the director.
Okay.
So Roberta Oysen.
All right, how about, what's your experience with disciplining employees?
I've come up with many guidelines, disciplinary, action-wise, progressive discipline. I've also been working with Portsmouth a lot in trying to get their contracts a little more friendly towards their employees, because some of them aren't right now, but we work, I work day in and day out with disciplinary. I have roughly sixteen employees under me.
As a highway supervisor, are you, are you a union employee up there?
Yes, I am. Separate union, but yes.
I'm sorry, what's that?
It's a separate union from where SMA supervises Managers Association.
You haven't been up there very long.
Nope. Oh, yeah.
This is February eighteen, yeah, almost a year. What were your reasons for leaving in Beverly?
There wasn't any room for advancement there. They didn't really promote from within. Kind of the, it was a little turmoil between a lot of the department heads there too, so it was very tough to kind of work together as a cohesive group, which I think is important with any public works department.
In your, your resume here, under the City of Beverly, foreman supervisor, the third one you listed is highway department. What, what, what does that entail? It's a foreman supervisor, but your, your third line is under, what was saying paving and maintenance, training new hires, highway department? What, what's that?
I think just, it was just typed in there as just general, general overseeing of all the highway department.
Now, where, where were you in line on, on the chain of command there in Beverly? Who was ahead of you?
So I had, I had my boss, and then we had a prior to, then the director.
You know, how many employees in the city of Beverly in the highway department?
They're roughly thirteen, twelve or thirteen.
And how about in Portsmouth?
About seventeen, sixteen, seventeen.
That's, that's all they got in Portsmouth?
Like I said, it's, it's separated much differently. They have a, they have a sewer and water department that are separate. They have a highway department, which I actually, within, within the highway department, run the parks and greenery's foreman has four other employees that is a new foundation that we're just kind of building up now.
In, in both communities, Portsmouth and Beverly, do they, do they use a lot of subcontract work?
In Portsmouth, not so much, especially with our snow. We do everything in-house. We literally have two contractors that we work with that have large pieces of equipment that run downtown. In Beverly, we had over, I think something like twenty-five contractors at any given time.
And who hires them?
I did a lot of the overseeing with the winter stuff, with the winter operations. As far as Chapter 90 sidewalks and contractors working with brocks and aggregate mainly, and then the subcontractors within their structures and sidewalk and concrete.
Now, how, how are they compensated? Are they compensated by, by weight of the vehicle, by, by weight of their vehicle, the subcontractors? By type of, type of equipment or weight? For snow?
Yeah, they go by the, the GVW of the vehicle, whether they had a plow or a wing and a salta, would be, that would be the adjustment we would make.
Okay, I'm, I'm all set for now, thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Dunn?
Thank you for coming in. I don't know if I'd next to it, but we are gonna hopefully be looking to get into a DPW situation. Seems like you have quite a bit of experience between Beverly and Portsmouth on that regard. Why do you want this job? Why are you leaving from a city to a small town like this?
Like I talked with Denise before, this is a unique opportunity. It's a challenge. I do have challenges every day in my job now, but I think I have the experience, the knowledge, and certainly know the ins and outs of the, the public departments to really facilitate this happening. It's, it'd be, it'd be, it'd be a great accomplishment for me to work for the city of, for the town of Groveland, excuse me.
Seeing where you are and what your position is, it sounds to me like you've got good computer, computer skills and administration skills.
Yep.
Not a problem.
Yep.
Chapter 90 money, you seem like you're well-invested in that. Skills, keeping up equipment, rotation of equipment, it seems to me like you've done that, been there.
Very integral part of being a highway supervisor is having people that maintain equipment. Where the biggest maintenance part of any, you know, municipality is the highway department.
Yep. Are you a good communicator between help and people in the town?
Excellent.
Residents?
Excellent communicator. I, on a daily basis, have a see, click, fix. I will call back anywhere from five to twenty-five phone calls in a day. I mean, I really, I can be out in the field paving half the day, be in meetings half the day, and then, you know, sometimes my days don't end until six, seven o'clock at night, you know, calling back residents and talking with you know, other, other public officials.
Yeah, how do you deal with stress and how would you handle it?
For some reason, even at a very young age, I was handed an awful lot. I was, you know, when most kids were out, you know, playing in the pools and going down the beaches, I ran my father's company. I always just kind of had a cool hand when it came to the public, people. It's just kind of a niche I've always had.
Okay. Do you complete projects on time?
I most definitely complete projects on time if, you know, even in challenging situations. But my biggest goal in most projects is to come under budget, find a way. I always have a unique way of finding that quicker way to get it done or more efficient way to get it done. That's what I pride myself on.
If you had equipment, would you run it to the, its life expensancy, or would you judge it as the piece of equipment went?
So it's a, it's, it's almost like a feeling you get with an animal with a piece of equipment. You can kind of tell when it's had its time.
Yep.
So I, I do think you can give up on equipment early, get money out of it, and turn it back in and get, you can get more for your buck that way, I think, sometimes. A lot of cities, bigger cities, will lease stuff even nowadays, which is a little too expensive, but...
Do you plan on being hands-on?
Absolutely. Even now, like I said, I'm, I'm a supervisor, I'm, I couldn't even tell you how many times people have, you know, wanted me to, you know, write me up to be in a piece of equipment because of the union, SMA and the thirteen eighty-six. It's, it's a challenge I deal with, but to get the job done, I'll gladly spend a half hour explaining my reasons to the director, why I'm in a loader or on an excavator or any piece of equipment needs. If, if it comes down to getting the job done in an, in an efficient... If, if it comes down to getting the job done in an efficient way, it's warranted.
Being hands-on and working with the crew, do you feel that being a manager position, you could do that as well, back and forth with the guys?
I do it now. Every day.
All right. Do you consider yourself a stern manager?
I am.
Let me put the second part, respect.
That's what I was gonna actually embellish on, is respect of the men and the people you work with is paramount. There's, there's nothing else that you, you can't substitute that, no substitution for respect.
Okay, and obviously down the road, if we went to DPW or whatever, and you needed more training or something, you weren't adverse, then would you be willing to do that?
Absolutely, I mean, then as we speak, looking to go back to, to school to finish my engineering degree.
Thank you.
No problem.
You answered all my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Kirby. You just mentioned you're going back to school to finish your engineering degree. Were you currently attending?
I'm not, I'm looking, I'm doing my prereqs right now, to possibly looking into doing a lot of it online.
Okay, have you done any of it yet?
I haven't, I've started with just the prerequisites, just, just filling the paperwork out and going, and doing the math and a lot of the, the beginning of it, but I'm looking into Meramec, so it'd be really close if I had to go to any place.
Okay.
Most of it can be done online.
That would be working on your associates, your bachelor's?
Uh, associates.
Associates.
Eventually to get a bachelor's.
Yeah, you gotta get that AD first, all right? You say you currently supervise as many as sixty employees, is that, did I get that correctly?
Yep, sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yes.
Sixty, I'm glad I asked that question, that's a pretty good crew. Which would have led me to my next question, how do you go from a crew of sixty to, you know, a very small crew? Currently, you're, it seems that you're the number three in your, I guess, department.
Yep.
This would be an obvious number, number one role. What kind of hours do you currently put into your, to your position?
They're endless, I mean, especially in the wintertime, I can show up on a Monday morning and not go home till Wednesday. I mean, it happens, so putting in time, it's not, not an issue for me at all.
Yeah, March, you, this past March, you probably would've slept here with four, back to back to back.
Oh, yeah, I slept in Portsmouth, actually, I started in February, and that was the ongoing joke, 'cause you're getting the snow with you, 'cause they thought it was gonna be an easy spring.
So, you're the reason?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, we've got somebody to blame anyways. What I wanted to ask you about was, you spent nine years in Beverly. You said there really was no room for advancement, so it's very understandable you're looking to, to move up and out. Is there no room, current room for advancement as well in Portsmouth?
There could be down the line, there could be. I could definitely see some way down the line there being some advancement. That's, yeah, and honestly, it's, it's a, it's a great city to work for, there's nothing wrong with that. Like I said, selectmen done, it's, this is a unique situation you're in, and I think that I'd be a perfect candidate for what you're looking for.
It's, it's definitely unique.
Yeah.
Going from two rather large cities, Beverly and Portsmouth, to such a small town, maybe a bit of a culture shock. How do you see yourself dealing with that?
I mean...
You're not gonna have the money, you're not gonna have the equipment, you're not gonna have the resource, you're not gonna have the manpower.
Correct.
And frankly, we don't have the money to give you any of that.
Unique situation.
Oh, you described it better than I could.
Yep.
So, how do you plan on dealing with that?
Like I said, I've, I've always, I thrive under pressure, and I'm a hands-on type of person. If there's a way to get it done, if there's a way that we can, you know, find money or find, you know, training for us to do other things, I'll, I will unveil it, and I will definitely apply it to whatever situation we have.
As far as capital equipment purchases, have you been involved in that?
Yep, I work with bid specs, do a lot of our, we do a lot through the NJP. We also have been working with, I think it's Boston Fire Association, the purchasing, that's actually been a really, the best thing about that company is when the vehicle shows up, you don't have to do anything, they'll literally put the symbols on for you, it's, it's a turnkey operation.
Now, in either of these cities, were you involved in snow removal from state and interstate highways?
Yep.
Both?
Yep.
Large pieces of equipment?
Oh, yeah.
Fun to drive, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Move that snow like crazy, don't they?
We have two snow goes in Portsmouth that go on six-eighty loaders.
And those are great for interstate ninety-five, right?
Well, we didn't do ninety-five.
You didn't do ninety-five?
Thirty-three, a lot of the intersecting roads that come into the city.
Route one?
Route one, the bypass, yep.
One-twenty-eight when you were in Beverly?
We didn't do one-twenty-eight, so sixty-two, one A, and Route three.
So, imagine the equipment you would buy for such big city, big job, would differ dramatically from what you may anticipate buying here. What I'm getting at is, these big trucks, they do the job great. I imagine they clear the highways like nothing, but in these small-town roads, it can literally knock the person out of bed as they rumble by. We have some big trucks here in this town, I mean, I imagine they could probably clear Logan Airport in fifteen minutes, seven feet of snow. What do you think would be, and it's, it's always hard to say, an ideal piece of equipment for a town like this?
For snow?
For snow removal.
For snow removal? There's many ways to do it.
For snow plowing, let's say.
Snow plowing is, well, that's a different story.
It is.
Wings, wing trucks in, in Everest systems that they have for plows, pretty standard piece of equipment and do a great job. So, you know, I don't know if you have any wing trucks, but wing, wing trucks with plows, that's pretty, pretty standard piece of equipment even for, for a town like this.
What kind of budgets do they have there in Beverly and Portsmouth?
Operating budget, Beverly was just shy of a million, Portsmouth's a little higher than that.
One point two, one point three?
One point six, actually.
One point six million. You'll be operating on, need I say, a considerably smaller budget here. What kind of equipment are you used to working with in these larger cities? Is it state-of-the-art, always top-notch?
Oh, no.
Always new, always up to date?
No, I mean, in Portsmouth, we have a loader, an old Volvo loader that's probably reached beyond its age of life, but we've been extending it. We do have one newer loader, I think it's two thousand ten or an eleven, it's not brand-new, but, not state-of-the-art either, not top-line, it's, it's a newer loader, but nothing, no fancy state-of-the-art. In Beverly, we did have some state-of-the-art, we had a state-of-the-art loader with a wing, a plow, had, you know, multiple attachments to it, we spent some money on that loader as well, over three hundred thousand dollars. But, there are other ways to get the job done. I mean, I've seen, we have an operator in Portsmouth that uses a grader from, I think it's the nineteen seventy eras. He gets just as much done with that grader than I've seen guys get done with, you know, three-quarters of a million-dollar grader, so...
Great. What would you say is the greatest asset you would bring to the table, to the town of Groveland?
My greatest asset is, I think, being able to acknowledge and decipher a problem and find the best, not, not always the quickest, but the best overall problem solver for that issue. So, I'm, I'm quick to diagnose problems, I usually have a unique way of finding a way to solve it in a relatively quick amount of time. So, I think that, that, that part of my experience is something that not a lot of people have, certainly not with, you know, without a lot of experience, you know, in a municipality.
What would you say your greatest weakness is?
My greatest weakness, that's a tough question.
It requires some self-examination, doesn't it?
I would say my greatest weakness is, coming here would be the budgetary restraints. But, again, I always find a unique way, and working with chapter ninety, there are many plans out there right now, the Heslip program, there are many programs that we can find little niches and nuances to get money out of. So, they're, they're hidden sometimes, but we can do it, we can find ways.
You're gonna squeeze that rock, huh?
Mm-hmm, as hard as you can.
Till Lincoln's nose bleeds, is what I say. What's the see, click, fix?
So, see, click, fix is an online app, a lot of people have it on their phone. They see a pothole, pothole on Pleasant Street, you know, and they give an address. It immediately will pop up an email on my phone, so I'll go on to it, see it. Some people, you can even take a picture of it, put it on there. It's a really, really unique tool, some people use it for the wrong reasons, they kind of use it as their own sounding board, but it is, it is, it is a great tool to have out in the field for residents, residents seem to love it. We didn't have it in Beverly, we did the old-school way with, you know, phone calls, which works too, we still get a lot of that, but it's a great tool to have, especially during snow operations. You know, people, you know, can't call or won't call, or you, even if you, even if they could call, no one's gonna answer the phone, so you can have it on your phone, like I said, and immediately shoots an email out to you, so you can respond to it.
And what's the typical response time, or something like that, from the minute you get?
I pride myself on one day. I usually respond to just about everything in one day. Whether I can fix it or not, that's a different story, but I can respond to it in one day. So, you can even add like a comment to it, like, you know, we'll be by in the spring if it's your lawn damage, or, you know what I mean, so on and so forth.
Okay. What do you like best about your current role?
My current role, my new hires, I have a lot of, probably have five new hires, just in the past couple months, in change in policy, so I've been doing a lot with, with a budgetary startup and the ability to kinda push the envelope with that, because they were, some of our labors coming out of the gate were drastically underpaid, so I worked with human resources and our operations manager as well as the director to, to get the starting pay back to kind of, I think they missed out on contracts for about five or six years, so their, you know, just their cost of living wages weren't bringing that wage up to where it should be. I mean, we demand our employees to have their CDL license within a year, and then they wanna pay them under eighteen dollars an hour, I think is kind of egregious, so...
So, the new hires you have, were they due to attrition, due to the...
Yeah.
Moving on, retirements?
I think, I think it's, it was a combination, we had a few retirements, we had a few, like I said, they would come in and the pay shock when they first got there was, you know, kind of, I don't think they were ready for that. I think I've changed.
What do you like least about your current role?
The things I can't change, the things that I think, you know, contractually, I don't have the ability to change, or I don't have my hands in it, so there are things that I think are wrong that probably won't ever change. I'm sure there's things here that are wrong that I probably won't ever change either, but that's...
Shouldn't be due to lack of trying, though.
That's right, absolutely not.
I currently have no further questions, selectmen watching, you have any follow-up questions?
I got one. You have any experience with writing grants?
Not a whole bunch, we, I have worked with a few engineers doing it, and like I said, with chapter ninety, I have done, you know, I have some experience in that department, not as much as some of the engineers I work with, but, but it's something that's definitely within my capability.
I'm all set.
I have a few more questions.
Okay.
So, I can say, not a hundred percent, but I can probably say a good sixty percent. I don't think, I think we can find ways to use our chapter money in different avenues we've been using it. So, that being said, if you're a digger, and you can dig, and you can find, I think you're gonna find places in this department that you're gonna be able to find money that can be used that way. You're coming from Portsmouth, is that gonna be a problem for the ride-in from Portsmouth?
I actually live in Methuen, so it's like a fifteen-minute ride for me.
Okay, all right, all right, that's my fault.
Even in snow, I can get there pretty quick.
One thing that impressed me, what you said, and I'm not here to brag, I'm not a bragger, I own my own business. I absolutely love challenges, you hit me when you said that. Someone that wants to challenge is someone that wants to do, and I constantly, you put a challenge in front of me, that's my goal.
Yeah.
It could be building a house, it could be putting a road, whatever, I love challenges, so I was impressed that you had said that. And I think someone asked you about pressure, you like working under pressure, that comes with the challenge part of it as well. That's, that's the adrenaline you get.
Right.
I get where you, I get where you're coming from there. You're a problem fixer. Again, with those three things all come in one, that's something, when you have that in you, it all, that's what it is, that's, that's your goal.
Right.
That's your makeup. Can you take the heat well? When I say take the heat well, a situation where, where a resident that's angry about his mailbox that got knocked off, or something stupid.
Right.
Can you?
Yelling and screaming.
Let me go one step further, the selectmen, if the selectmen want something or they need something.
Yep.
Some people that I deal with in my business, they cop an attitude, or you're angry, I'm one that wants to resolve. I wanna get it resolved, let's work together. How would you say you are?
Like I said, the heat, the pressure, I deal with people, I deal with the public all the time. Like I said, the angry people with the mailbox, we had a woman come in, Maplewood Ave in Portsmouth's kind of a wide road, doesn't get plowed, doesn't get pushed back, kind of, you know, over-the-top yelling and, you know, I just, we're gonna address it.
Yeah.
We'll take care of it. I think that there's always a way that you can push someone in the right direction when they do get out of hand.
Right.
And obviously with words, not the physical kind.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And my last thing is, you touched on patience, on a scale of one to ten, where do you find yourself with patience?
Right near ten, I have two children, so they help a lot, I do a lot of, I do a lot, I do help the community out a lot, so... Everywhere I go, either my own community, other people's community, I'm always there to help, and I think that type of patience you, you have.
And Bill touched upon a minute ago, and about, I think his concern is you're going from big apartments to a smaller department, but, and this is me, I'm not speaking for you, but me, if I was to take this, me owning my own business and going down, it would be a challenge because we have the possibly DPW, we're obviously having a DPW gentleman leave, revamp the department, so I think that the, it may not be as boring as it might appear to be, 'cause you're gonna, again, fall into the pressure, the challenge and all that stuff to build it, and what have you, and it's not broken, by no means, we have good equipment. We're very fortunate that we, in the past, I'm gonna say, what, six years or so, we've gotten equipment, and we're always on top of our equipment, you know what I mean, so I don't, you're not coming into a junk department.
You have to be on top of it in some level, or else... You have to be on top of it in some level, or else you wouldn't have-
And, and we have, we have, the guys that work in our department are great guys. Our, our foreman, our mechanic, he's washing, he's cleaning- and he keeps our equipment up one hundred percent, and, and the guys don't beat on it. I mean, they're very, very good. And anytime we ask those guys in this town, we ask them for anything, put up a Christmas tree, do anything, they're there for us. They never say no. And our, and our, our superintendent that's leaving has been very good that way as well. And, um, that's important.
Teamwork's the most important. That's one thing that I, that I loved about, love about Portsmouth is we all work together.
That's the biggest thing.
We might not all see eye to eye all the time-
Right.
But we all have the same goal, and that's to get the job done correctly, so.
Right, well, I think I, I think you've answered everything I needed, and thank you for coming in.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
I'm all set.
I have no further questions. I, I, again, I share the, uh, comments of my, uh, colleagues. I wish to thank you for your time, um, and your efforts coming in here tonight and meeting with us. You are one of a number of individual candidates who are, um, interviewing at, at the moment for this position. I do not believe we will have a final decision tonight. I could be wrong, I've been wrong before, I'm probably gonna be wrong many times again before I pass away. But I do not believe that'll be the case, but someone will be in touch with you one way or the other. I would think relatively shortly, unless it goes on to the next, uh, meeting, which due to the holiday, would not be till after the first of the year.
Okay.
But again, thank you for your time and, and, uh, best of luck in everything, uh, and, uh-
Excellent.
Happy holidays.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, boy.
Certainly, certainly some interesting candidates. Is it the Board's, um, wishes to have further discussions on these candidates at this time?
I am.
Discuss away then.
Uh, I'm sorry, what was that about?
Is it-
You wanted to wait?
No, I, I said, is it, is it the Board's desire to have discussions on these candidates now, or? And, so you both want to, so who wants to begin the discussions?
I can, I can start.
All right.
Looking at all three cand- all, all three candidates have strong points, they have weak points. I wasn't overly impressed with any of them. I'd like to see what else, you know, these, these are three people. I'd like to do what we did with the, uh, Town Planner's position is, uh, keep it open, see if we get some better candidates. Uh, I don't think all of the requirements that we had put out there, I, I don't think, I don't think any of these candidates meet all of the requirements. Some of them are lacking in, um, a lot of areas. I don't, I don't see any of them that really have, have any, uh, budgeting or, or capital planning experience. So, uh-
Remind me again, Denise, what are we offering currently offering, the salary?
So, we increased it from the current position. The current incumbent is at eighty-four thousand, and we increased the range from eighty-five to ninety. And I can tell you, um, keeping it open, I will just say I have not received a resume since November ninth. So, nothing's come in, it's still posted, um, it's still on our website, it's still up. We would have to repost it, um, and/or discuss the salary if you wanna keep it open.
I know, this is, uh, this, this is a, uh, this is a chance to get it right, and, um, they all, they all have weaknesses, they all have strong points. I think their weakness is far away some of their strong points. I, I think we should, should post the job again and, and see what else is out there, and, uh, you know, if you want, if you wanna pick apart, uh, each, each one of these where you see, where you see that some of their weaknesses, uh-
I don't think it's necessary, but I think we get your general gist. But the, the position is currently still, um-
It's still open. It's open and still filled. The position is still posted on our website on the bulletin board. We could certainly repost it again on, um, the MMA's website. I know in speaking to, uh, Bob Ericanley, and his thought was this is a good time of year for movement because, um, where there is snow and obviously winter operations, public works departments are quiet with projects during the winter months, so there's a lot of movement usually that he sees. You know, maybe if we repost it, um, we'd have better luck, I don't know.
My fear is we might have trapped all the fish we're going to trap at this current level of salary.
So, I will say-
And to trap a more enticing fish, someone with more closely aligns, uh, the qualifications as Selectman Watson has pointed out, uh, may inquire, um, a bit more of an enticement.
So, it is possible West Newbury had a higher salary range, um, and got many more candidates to apply for their position. Um, I will tell you two, two candidates that applied that were very qualified. Uh, one withdrew, um, given his situation where he currently is, his supervisor was moving on and he was hopeful to move up. And the other one actually never responded to my calls or emails or requests for interview. So, I, again, I don't know. Certainly could look at, um, changing the salary range this year. It should be fine this fiscal year because with Bob now being done almost, uh, actually a month now, um, he's only working a handful of hours. We would have the capacity and the budget, depending on what range you wanted to go to, and then we would just have to make sure that, um, we could properly budget for it going forward, if you wanted to adjust it.
Where's West Newbury? Where do they have to come in?
Well, so they're a DPW director, um, although it's-
Well, that's the way we'd like to migrate to.
Correct. So, their range, I believe, was ninety to like one oh five or one ten. Um, I don't think we should be that high here, um, for the current position. Um, I do think ninety, ninety-five is really the marketplace for this type of role. I don't think we should go much higher, if you're looking to adjust it.
Yes.
Okay. So, number one, I think all three candidates were very honest. I think that they all definitely had their knowledge, but I think one candidate stuck out the most to me. And I think from what I've got, that person would probably be a, a good manager from what I've heard, um, from that person, and, um, I don't think, I think that it would be, I personally think he'd, he'd be a good fit for this town because where we gotta go, and where we're trying to go, he would get us there. So, we possibly hire him, and then we meet with him and talk to him possibly saying, if we go to the DPW, we bring you up in salary at that point in time and see if he's open for that. But I think this person, um, definitely, from what I can tell, would do what we need to do. I think he's got enough experience and what have you, and I think he knows what we need to do. It's my opinion.
You're gonna keep us in the dock, you're gonna tell us which one of these three?
Well, I, I didn't know if you could do it.
Yeah, you can.
Candidate three, i- i- in my opinion. I think he's got enough knowledge, I think that he's confident, I think that he said a lot of things that I, um, can relate and get where he's coming from. I think he's gonna be eager, eager to, to take this on.
My personal opinion is I, I, I kinda lean toward candidate two, but I'm, I'm with Selectman Watson's opinion. None of these guys are just blowing me over. Um, I'm, I'm just, um, again, I think, uh, Selectman Watson and I share a similar opinion here. We really wanna hit a home run right, right out of the gate. This is such a vitally important role to the town that we can't afford to swing and miss. It's too expensive, it's too critical, it's too vital a role for us to even foul one off.
Well, I agree what you're saying, but in this role, there's nothing in there that states that someone has to be an engineer, okay? So, we don't have that in there, so we can't ask a person to be an engineer, that's not in there, and we're not paying for the engineering background. So, if we wanna try and get this perfect candidate, we gotta say, you, you need to have an engineering background, you need to have, uh, masters in whatever. I mean, you'd have to pay more than ninety, and you're gonna turn around and get a different set of candidates. I think the candidates that you're getting are moving up from a role, um, where they're going up to do something over and above, um, from where they are now. I think this candidate two, um, personally, I think he's got, um, I don't know what it is, it's, um, maybe a job, uh, a lot of job change. I, I don't think that, um, I just didn't feel comfortable. I, I didn't feel comfortable. I definitely feel comfortable, and I put my, my, my head on the roll for this candidate three. I, I think he's professional, I think he definitely, I would not, not steer the town down the wrong road. But again, if you guys wanna do that, I, I get it. I mean, but I think we're gonna have to change the amount of pay, and we're gonna be looking for a whole different person. I think Denise just said it, it's still advertised, and she's not getting any, any more people knocking our door down right now. It's still advertised?
It's still advertised.
At this, at this current level, I, I think we've exhausted the fish we're gonna catch in this trap.
Right.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Right.
We may have to offer a little more to entice the type of candidate that we wanna attract and retain.
Okay, so my point is, we're not a DPW yet, so we're gonna be paying someone in a role that can't, the pay's there, but he can't really do the job, you know what I'm trying to say?
But-
The engineering background, he could probably use-
The hope is the person will have the experience to pull this all together within a reasonably short period of time, whereas someone without that experience, patience is not one of my greatest virtues either, and I, 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 I don't want to, um, waste a lot of time trying to bring someone up to speed who has that, who, who can finally, has that type of experience to pull this all together into a DPW. I'd rather have somebody that's pretty close to that, that point now, so that they can quickly pull this all together, and within a year or two, have one really top-notch functioning DPW with, uh, cemetery and, and, uh, you know, the other departments underneath that operates really at a high efficiency level.
I got you, but I hear ya. Go ahead. I have, I understand you're valid, you have a valid point, but my point is, if you brought the old rusty car in a little bit, and that person was able to do what would, you know what I mean? I think this person can do what you just said. I think this person definitely could do what you said. He would be getting paid this money, and he'd be morphing that department into the DPW. You're trying to bring someone in from the top and sink them down in, um, yeah, that would work. We're gonna be paying money. This might take a couple of years to do, this person could, he wants the challenge, he could probably bring us up to there. I get what you're saying, what you and Ed wanna do is get someone experienced up here, let them make all the changes. I'm trying to bring, um, someone out of town, someone that has the experience, and it's gonna take a few years anyway, they gotta get in there, they gotta look the department over, they gotta make some changes within the department itself, and then he could be working on making a DPW. That's just my thought.
I don't think it, go ahead.
All, all three candidates, uh, Bill, they're, they're not coming from the top. They're all coming basically from middle management. And, uh, so, you, you're taking a person, some of these people that are, are middle management, and, and you're putting them into, uh, the top role. Most of these people have, all of them have somebody, somebody over them that are making final decisions. When they're, when they're here, they're gonna be the top dog. But it'd be interesting to know if the, uh, did you check out the, all three of these candidates, uh, resume, uh, the, uh, yeah?
References.
Thank you very much.
I did not at this point. I did background checks, but I didn't wanna check references until I knew if you were gonna narrow it down or not. I didn't think it was fair to them.
Okay. I'd, I'd still go with, uh, reposting the job, uh, see, see what else is out there.
Yeah, if I can make one final point too. We kind of experienced this similar situation with the Town Planner, if you remember, and we took a little extra time, we put a little more juice into the pot, and I think what we came up with is just an outstanding candidate that's gonna be with us for a long time, energetic, experienced, knowledgeable. I think we hit a home run with her. And I think none of these, and no disrespect to any three of them, I think they're all tremendous candidates. I just don't see a rock star right now in any of them.
So, then we need to discuss what we're gonna do for pay, because if you're gonna try and go, she, Denise just said, we haven't got any calls or any references recently, so we're gonna have to discuss bringing that pay rate up to get that rock star in.
But we may, we may not have to bring it up that much. I don't know either. I mean, if I knew all the answers, I'd run for God, and, but, you know, let's find out.
My question would be, and probably more toward Denise, do you think that you're gonna get a person that Ed and Bill wanna do and say, I don't wanna take, that's not enough of a department, it's not enough of a challenge, you know what I'm trying to say? Oh, they may just take the money and say, oh, I'm gonna go in there and take it easy, it's this kind of money, and I'll work the department up. I don't, I don't know. I mean, yeah, my point is, when you get someone in the next pay scale, that's like taking someone and dropping them down. You get what I'm saying?
Right, like I said, I don't think we're far off the mark with the salary. I don't think we need to be adjusting it that much. The only thing I can compare it to is the West Newbury process. I mean, they're a similar-sized town, similar-sized department, they got a significant amount of resumes. As far as resumes here, it was these three candidates and the two that did not, um, interview that actually had highway public work experience. The remainder of them, there's a lot of water, uh, people with water, um, experience. We got some construction experience, but no roadway experience. So, we had five DPW highway experience people. Whether that will change or not, I don't know. But I don't think we're that far off the mark with the salary. I mean, for, for a highway supervisor, a town this size, a department this size, the budget's about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, like I said, ninety-five really would be, I think, the most. I don't think, um, it's really more than that at this time.
That's pretty much where I was headed. I think that's about your max, but I, I, I think you'll be surprised by how many more fish that five grand will, will attract.
So, repost it again and put it at ninety-five and repost it again, I mean, uh-
Do we have the money? Before we go to spending it, let's make sure we have it.
We already went from one.
Well, again, uh, we should have it this year based on the capacity that we have in the current budget, because he's not working, um, full-time. And then we just have to budget accordingly going forward. Um, I'm sure, I have a finance board meeting on Wednesday, I can certainly discuss this with them. My guess is they would be open to, um, even if we needed to find the money, 'cause I think they're very interested in finding the right candidate, someone that could move up to be a DPW director. That's their ultimate goal as well.
And we can always re-interview when it's these candidates down the road, should we?
What I was gonna suggest doing is write these three candidates, just say that we weren't able to make a decision. We're gonna repost again. You're welcome to fill up the paperwork again. I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's fair. I mean, I don't think we should even hang if they have something they wanna go-
Oh, absolutely, no, no.
Right, no, I would reach out to them tomorrow.
You don't leave, you don't leave anybody hanging, I mean, but-
I wouldn't close the door, I mean, but unless you wanna close, I don't know.
No, uh, listen, I can, I can give it to you, 'cause I've had a number of them. Thank you for submitting your resume and interviewing with Acme Rubber. Uh, at this time, your qualifications do not meet with the qualifications described in the job role. Uh, we appreciate your time and effort, and we'll re-contact you if something, situation changes.
Yeah, although I would say at that point, the candidates are not gonna wanna stay in the, they're not gonna resubmit a resume if you exclude them at this point. They're not gonna reapply, so.
No, I wouldn't think they'd reapply. But I have applied for a job that I was overqualified for, they kinda put it aside. The job, the role kinda changed. They said, hey, I remember somebody a few months back, and they said, hey, we've kind of adjusted the role, would you be interested? Sure, it's something different, something new now, let's talk about it again. That may be the situation. We may adjust it, bring some of these folks back and say, we've kinda tweaked the job description a little bit, and now maybe you fit a little bit more into that role.
Well, I would think you'd need either one of them to have an engineering degree, 'cause they are, these, all three of them said they don't have an engineering degree, so if you're the-
No, but we are not requiring an engineering degree.
What, what are we gonna change from what you've advertised this- What are we gonna change from what you've advertised this job to advertising this new one for ninety-five? What are we gonna change?
I don't think anything, just the salary.
We're not gonna change anything. What we're hoping to do is get a better quality candidate, right?
I'd come back down, I'd show, I'd come on down and sit down again for five more grand. I would if I were them, it's like, you don't close the door on them. I would.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't, I typically, it doesn't happen. I'd be surprised, but, you know. So...
So, is someone making a motion to change the salary and/or repost it?
Yeah, repost it with a, repost it with a five thousand dollar increase in the salary.
So, I'll make the range eighty-five to ninety-five. So, it still gives some flexibility if you want, we wanna offer a lower starting salary.
Yeah, but, yeah, I think the upper end, just moving it up that little notch, you'd be surprised. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's not all those in favor?
No.
Again, let's hopefully we can catch lightning in the bottle twice again like we did with that Town Planner.
When the Town Planner, we did that at one rate and then we went back out for quite a bit more.
Yeah, so originally it was part-time...
Not a lot more.
It was a lot. It was part-time, and then we went back out with a, it was about twenty-eight thousand, went back out for sixty-five thousand in full-time, full-time benefits.
It was quite a difference.
But what are we getting for it?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I think she's very qualified and I'm very happy in how it went, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just saying that, let's go with this. I mean, I'm going to be surprised if there's eleven candidates that come to Denise for this job, I just, that's my opinion. Hopefully you guys prove me wrong, I do, I mean...
I'd be surprised if there are eleven too, but if we can get another six, maybe, five, something more to look at, I think it would give us just...
Right, and I mean, it's been a few months since it was initially posted, so maybe situations have changed and people now looking for a first of the year change in jobs, who knows? Maybe we'll have a lucky streak.
You never know, we can all hope, we can all open pray, right? Moving right along, we have the Cable Committee to discuss the cable contract. Good evening.
Good evening.
You are the Cable Committee?
My name is Tracy Gelford, for Abbott Circle Groveland. I am the Chairperson of the Cable TV Advisory Board. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, before I entertain some questions for you, I would like to answer some questions that were brought up at the November thirteenth meeting, as a result of things that were said that night, I would like to address. First and foremost, it is the Cable TV Advisory Board, not committee. I would wanna make that clear to people. Second...
Hold on.
Yep.
Correction duly noted?
Yes.
I'm just reading from my notes.
Yep, I just want people to address a board or a committee as they are officially listed in the town report.
Fair enough.
As appointed. I wanna address some of the concerns. As far as the board, we had not met for quite some time, and that was due in part. We lost a number of members. We lost our Chairperson, Kenny Hamilton, who passed away, and we lost two other board members who, due to things going on in their life, decided to bow out, leaving just Ed Watson and myself, not leaving us a quorum, so we could not meet. Recently, you appointed two new members to the committee, which finally gave us a point to start meeting again.
Is it a committee or a board?
I mean, board, I'm sorry. Because so many people have called it a committee for so long.
Just wanna make sure, get the verbiage right.
Yep. Part of the challenge of recruiting members, and I say this, I'm not looking to offend any of you before, but some people declined the opportunity to serve because they felt appearing before this board felt like you were coming before a court. You know, and I have to, you know, in your defense, I told people this board's gotten a lot better at working with people, you know, as we all wanna work together with boards and committees to make things happen in a positive way. But, you know, because of that, what's happened in the past, it has been a challenge to recruit people. Another thing, my goal as a Chairperson was to have a full board before we had started to work into the contract, because I didn't wanna start and then have to bring somebody up to speed. We still have one vacancy, which I believe we have a volunteer, which will be coming before you soon to be appointed, so that we will have a full board. Second, you know, one of the policies I believe most boards and committees have is not talking about people if they are not at a meeting. I would respectfully ask this board and all other boards to consider the same thing when you're talking about a board or committee that is doing work on your behalf. Up until three meetings ago, I had been at almost every board of selectmen meeting operating the cable equipment. I have missed the last three meetings due to one of my coworkers giving birth. I work in a company that has three employees. Now, we're down to two employees, and we still have to get the same work done, so unfortunately I missed the last three meetings. So, I'm looking to pick up the pace. I understand where the Board of Selectmen is coming from. We believe, we did meet as a board recently, and we have set out a timeline of what we believe will work to get done, what needs to be done on behalf of the town of Groveland. I will ask Mr. Chairperson to appear again at the first meeting of your board in January, so we can give you the timeline that we expect will be necessary to get done what you require of our board. One of the things that was brought up at the November thirteenth meeting, or because of comments made, some people believe the cable board has control over the cable rates. And I wanna tell everyone at home, we have nothing to do with the cable rates. The cable company we deal with sets their own rates. Some people, like I say, because they believe we had control over it, we don't, any more than the health department controls the price of drugs or services at the hospital. People brought up the Verizon thing at the November thirteenth. We had met with Verizon a number of years ago. Their representative made it very clear to us that they would not cable Groveland or run FiOS until they were going to do HAVL. I do keep in touch with HAVL Public Access Television, 'cause I know the Executive Director. I did make another phone call. I generally make a call on a yearly basis, just to say, hey, just, I'd like an update, any move on Verizon's part to cable HAVL? I made that call again recently, and the Executive Director over there has said they still do not have any timeline for doing HAVL. I feel the frustration of everyone else, 'cause I am a Comcast subscriber, so every time the rates go up, I feel it, just like everyone else, but I, and the board, have no control over that. Verizon, Verizon, like I say, only has to meet the terms of our current contract with our current cable company. So, you know, this board is not holding up progress for Verizon coming into Groveland. I find it frustrating to know that Georgetown has Verizon, Barksford has Verizon, that we can't. But I wanna make it clear that this board is not the holdup. It was brought up, electric company operated cable. I think it's a wonderful idea. I, like everyone else, think our electric company is the best, and I wouldn't trade them for anyone. But at the same point, we had touched base with them a while back, and they had declined the opportunity to expand their services to include cable television. Live streaming was brought up at the meeting. I have to say, I'm not opposed to live streaming at any of our meetings. We asked for some information on that, and doing our due diligence as people call to see what it entails, the costs. We had planned on discussing it at our last meeting, 'cause we had paperwork on it, and at the last minute, new paperwork was introduced with a higher rate, and I am one, as a Chairperson, do not like reading material, being prepared for one thing, and then having something introduced that evening that is a higher rate. I plan on doing our due diligence and researching it, and again, we will get back to you on that regard. I do wanna say I was a little disappointed to find out from that meeting that you were spending money from the cable TV account again. I will respectfully disagree, and, you know, and as I say, respectfully disagree. As I've said before, I don't consider the cable money a petty cash fund. When the money was first expended on the service for Town Hall and the police station, again, that's an item that could be budgeted under capital. The security cameras that were approved out of the cable money last time, I think it's a wonderful thing, but I think, again, that could be budgeted. The cable TV thing is changing. What's going to happen in a few years, I don't know. So, I am not one to spend money just for the sake of spending money out of that account because we don't know where we're going. There is a move on by the cable companies, both Verizon and Comcast would like to see all public cable access disappear, 'cause it would improve their bottom line. So, what's gonna happen, I don't know. So, again, I would prefer money not being spent out of that, for that reason. I think it's, the other thing I wanna point out is that money is coming from Comcast customers only. There are people in this town that have the satellite dish, and I can't remember, DirecTV, do not pay into that account. So, I don't think the money should be spent other than for this cable projects.
How many cable projects do you currently have going?
We had discussed, one of the things that has been brought up by Chris, our employee, was that our carousels, which run the messages on Channel nine and twenty-two, are nearing the end of their life, so are going to have to be replaced, so we voted to do that.
What's the cost?
I do not remember. What's the cost, Chris, of the two carousels?
We spent about ten thousand dollars on that. I would like to point out, we were operating on about a five-year plan of replacing everything. This is the fifth year. So, spending down that account of, you know, much less than we had anticipated would be in there, puts us in a bad position for replacing the Tricaster, replacing the video server, replacing the sound equipment, which I know is a priority. Everything's five years old at minimum, ten years old at maximum.
I've been on FinCom and Capital for four years before I was selectman. Where was your plan? I've never seen that.
Well...
Where was your five-year plan?
One of the things...
I can show you what we planned on doing.
You could show me now, where has it been?
I wanna just bring something back.
Yeah, we haven't met as a committee, 'cause we didn't have a quorum, so...
We don't read minds either.
Right. One of the things I wanna point out too, is the cable TV, because it wasn't a budgeted thing, was generally not under the auspices of the Finance Committee. When we had a piece of equipment that needed to be replaced, we would replace it. We would have a meeting, you know, Chris would notify us that I need this, we'd have a meeting, we would vote the funds to replace it. And like I told you earlier, because we lost our Chairperson and two other people, we could not have a functioning board without a quorum, 'cause Ed and I were the only ones left.
So, I've asked this question before...
Taking back, can I just finish two other points and then I will...
Quickly, quickly, because...
Okay, well, like I say, I just wanna clear up things that people have thought from seeing the meeting of the thirteenth.
Well, sometimes people have misinterpretations and misconceptions of what they hear.
Right.
Sometimes they only hear what they wanna hear and disregard the rest as well.
That's why I wanna clear this up.
Maybe this isn't all fair.
So that we're all on the same page, and we're all working together as a team to get done the best thing for the town. Microphones, you know, was brought up. Microphones, like I told you, we've gone through, we're on our third different set of microphones in this room. Originally, we were hardwired. People didn't like that, 'cause they thought it was a tripping hazard. We had microphones hanging from the ceiling. People decided they didn't like that, 'cause it didn't look nice. We have these. Chris has worked with our vendor to the point where I was watching the meeting of the thirteenth, and I had no problem hearing any of the Board of Selectmen speaking. So, to me, I think it's working now. I mean, if you have something you believe isn't working, I would like to know. And I would encourage anyone at home, rather than going to just the Board of Selectmen, would be to write us a note addressed to the Cable TV Advisory Board here at Town Hall. I mean, I would like information. I don't want to have just people hearsay, saying, one person. I mean, I'd also like to find out if we can identify everyone who thinks they have a problem. It could be a cabling problem in one street area. So, if it's something that people on one side of Groveland hear the sound properly and somebody else doesn't, then we can go to Comcast and say, hey, some of your equipment may be on poles in this area of town, may not be functioning properly. I don't wanna just spend money for the sake of spending money and find out it really wasn't needed to be done. Because one of the things that the previous Board of Selectmen had us do was, we cabled this room, 'cause meetings take place here. We had the prior selectmen room over there that was taken over for storage, and we had already specced out equipment for that. We were told by the Board of Selectmen at that time, oh, just do the meeting room over at the fire station. Well, we spent thousands of dollars to install cameras and equipment in the fire station meeting room, and Mr. Chairperson, that equipment has not been used once. And Mr. Chairperson, that equipment has not been used once for any board or committee or even the fire station. So to me, it was wasted money. So I'm not one, I'm old-fashioned conservative. Spend money if we need to spend money, but I'm not about to spend money for something that can be fixed or done.
Agreed, and I don't think I had any part of that decision-making process over there.
And I'm not, I'm not accusing you of that.
So I'm not sure how it happened or how it evolved. But we're here to discuss the current cable contract and its expiration in less than one year from today's date and where you are in the process of this.
Yep. So, Mr. Chairman, we have met as a committee. I have asked all the committee members to review the contract. So at our next meeting, we can discuss what we need to do. One of our committee members, Rob Carbone, is also does, is in the process of cable negotiations in the town of North Reading. So he has done out a timeline of what, because he has just in the process of finishing up the contract, he's familiar with it. He has done out a schedule by month of what he believes we need to do. And like I say, I respectfully request to appear before this board at your first meeting in January to present that timeline to you and discuss anything else.
It will absolutely be the first or second. I don't know what we have on the first. We've kind of already added, I know we've had at least one item tonight, but it will definitely be one of the other. Now, so what you've just said, you're beginning to work on it, contradicted something you said just a few moments ago, where you wanted to wait a little while to get another member to start the business so you didn't have to bring him up to speed.
No, that was, that was when we had, when we had just Ed and I, then we, you appointed two more members. I had hoped to have our fifth, but we have met as a board recently to start the process.
So you're not waiting for the fifth member?
No, we are not. And the other thing I just wanted to point out, Mr. Chairman, at the meeting of the 13th, when it was discussed, the letter that came from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Telecommunications and Cable, I don't believe I was ever given a copy of that letter until recently. So...
Who was it addressed to?
Chairman, Board of Selectmen, Town Hall.
I mean, Selectman Watson is one of your members. He's the Board of Selectmen appointee.
I know, he's the one that, that gave me the copy. But, you know, that was discussed at your meeting on the 13th and I was never, you know, given that letter until Selectman Watson presented it to me at our most recent meeting. So again, for us to have good communication, whether that could have been emailed to me, you know, when that came in, you know, I just...
I don't even recall getting a letter.
I had respectfully requested...
Yeah, it was to the Board of Selectmen. It was in your correspondence.
Request us to work together as a team to make this happen. And I was not given that, probably to Selectman Watson giving it to me, so...
I apologize. I guess I, I was not aware that you weren't copied on the letter.
I was not.
Or I was the only one copied on this letter. Is that my understanding?
No, it went to the Board of Selectmen.
It went to the entire board?
Came to the board under, under correspondence, I believe.
So one of your committee, board members, I'm sorry, had that information? If he didn't share with you?
I gave it to him. Well, what he's, I think what Tracy is looking at is when it came to, when it dealt with the contract and it came to the Board of Selectmen, he should, he should have got a copy at that time and not having to wait for, wait for us to give it or me to give it to him. He probably should have been given it right away.
The only other thing I would ask respectfully, Mr. Chairman, in future meetings, you know, in order for me to have the right answers for you, that if I am going to be on the agenda for something, if there's something specifically that any one of the Board of Selectmen want answered that night, that it be emailed to me so I can do my due diligence in research so that if I don't have, you know, I want to give you the answers you want and need.
I think every effort will be made to do that. However, it, I don't think all questions can be possibly covered in an email because something may arise during the course of the discussion.
Yeah, correct.
That prompts another question and therefore it will be possible to cover all subject matters.
Correct, but anything you believe or, or any of the board members believe needs a little bit of research ahead of time, like I say, I would respectfully ask for, you know, geez, we would like answers to these questions so that I can do my research. Because I respect the amount of time that each and every one of you put into what you're doing. But I need sometimes because of my schedule, a little bit of time to do research.
And as we do too. But I think this is just a 50,000-foot discussion preliminary to get a general feeling of where the board is in this contract renegotiation.
Yep.
That expires now in less than one year. Where have you been? Where are you going? You just said you've just recently started having meetings again.
Yep.
Are they going to be regularly?
Yes.
Will there be minutes posted on the websites so people can keep track of the, you know, evolution of this contract negotiations?
Yes.
And I think that's what, where this preliminary discussion is about, just trying to get a feel for where we are, where you folks are in these discussions. And again, I tried to get this before. So not everybody's on Comcast. I get it. What are the benefits? What are the benefits of this contract to somebody that doesn't have Comcast? If you have DirecTV, if you have Dish, if, what would be the benefit to you from this contract?
No, I'm, the benefit to all of us, Mr. Chairman, is at one point, when this town was once served by three daily newspapers and either weekly or bi-weekly, we actually got reporting so people could actually know what was happening. Sometimes I would buy two or three papers when it was a controversial issue because I wanted to have information, balanced information. And sometimes I would be at meetings and a reporter, I would ask them, how come you wrote this in your article when it was also said this? Well, my editor said I only have a 12-inch column instead of a 20-inch column. Public access television is vital to everyone in this town because we post the pictures on YouTube, I mean, the video on YouTube. So even somebody who is not Comcast person does not have to come down to the meeting and they still know what's happening in this town. Like I told you, there is a move of group that wants to eliminate that. They don't want the people to know what's going on. So by having this, whether it's Verizon or Comcast, you get your information out to the people. So even if I agree to disagree on something, you know, all the people in town see the same thing. If they draw a different conclusion from something that they saw, at least they saw all the information versus the old days when it was printed in the paper and somebody had to condense something.
I have an antenna on my TV. I don't have internet. I don't do YouTube. What's my benefit?
None.
None.
You have the option of going down to the library, going to your friends and seeing on computer.
But, on the other hand, what this board did with some of that money did, in fact, benefit every single resident in this town.
Right, but you punished the Comcast customers paying for it all versus paying for it out of people's taxes so that everyone who benefits is paying for that, whether it was the server or whether it's the security cameras.
But how did we punish them?
You're asking me, as a Comcast customer, to subsidize...
The fund still seems to be adequate to do everything you've already talked about and then some, and you'll still continue to, to gain funds in that account throughout the course of, of this current contract and hopefully in the process of the second contract. But with that money, the town was able to do some tremendous things for all the residents, not just those who subscribe to Comcast.
Right, but you're just asking the Comcast customers to pay for it and...
So could I jump in here?
Yeah, sure.
About four...
No, no, if you're going to speak, you're going to come up here and be on TV too and be introduced so the people at home know who you are.
Hi, Chris Lucori. So about four or five years ago now, we spent about $160,000 on, on equipment upgrades. And that's about in the ballpark of what we were looking to do within the next year. So yes, you know, we will still have another year of that contract and whatnot. And, you know, we're going to make sure that this gets renewed. But, you know, we have plans for what we were hoping to do with that and, you know, we just all need to be on the same page so that if we think there's 300,000 in there, you know, we don't wake up the next day and there's, you know, less than, you know, very significantly less than that is, is the point.
I guess I'll go to the chair. I was involved here on the board when that money was spent. I would, if you could answer me, how was that money supposed to be spent? Was that money spent wrong? How was the money supposed to be spent? That money that was spent for the, I don't, what'd we use it on? We used it on...
You used it on service for the police station and the fire station.
Okay.
And you just voted like, what, 78,000 for security cameras?
So the guideline of spending that money, how's the guideline of spending that money supposed to be spent?
Like everything else, you can have interpretations from attorneys. Our town attorney made the interpretation that it could be spent that way.
No, I'm asking you, I'm asking you, how, what is your belief of how that money's...
My belief is it should be done...
Only on cable?
Only on cable.
Only on cable?
Only on cable.
So they, they...
My belief, but you are free, you know, like I say, because we didn't have a, a board at the time.
I got you. But what I'm saying to you is, was that money spent out of line? It shouldn't have been spent on those projects. Or did, did the board do the right thing to spend the money? Forget Town Council. In your eyes, I get your saying, you're saying some of the Comcast people didn't pay, they were, they were, whatever the wording you put. My point is the money is in an account to be used. You guys were going to use it to update this five-year equipment. I got all that, okay? Security, I think the board felt security was more important.
Yep.
And the way I sat here and the way I voted was because they presented me the case that the money could be spent that way. And I asked them clearly, I asked them before I voted, tell me how this money can be spent. I heard the piece about Town Council. I also, someone read something here, I believe, on how the money can be spent.
Different towns and cities have, again, depending on lawyer interpretation, you know, I guess under the lawyer interpretation, you spent the personal opinion. And like I say, I respectfully disagree. I'm not going to yell and scream like some people will do. I just, I, I personally think it's wrong. It may be the legal thing, but it just, I don't think it's...
And in all likelihood, probably that contract allowed for that to happen will get taken out of the next contract. That was one thing that was said at the time. It may hurt us in negotiations that, you know, that was spent that way. It may not. That could be just open to interpretations.
But my point is, there's got to be a written set of guidelines somewhere stating what you just said. There's got to be something stating that you can't use it for this, it only can be spent on cable access only.
Right.
And the way that it was presented to me, that wasn't, that wasn't it. But let me just say one, one other thing, and I know it's not on the subject on hand, but we talked about five-year plan. How much money do you think you need next year to update all this equipment?
It's going to be probably over $150,000.
Okay.
I mean, we, we spent a lot of stuff on this room, you know, that system is five years old. It could go down tomorrow and we'd have to spend 30,000 to replace it.
Okay.
The server is over 10 years old. That's another 20,000 to replace.
Right.
If we want to switch out every microphone in here, that's 30,000 north, north of that. I mean, we, we like to just know, you know, the big things that are coming down the pike so that we can do them all.
So do you plan on wiping this stuff all out and spending 160 grand? That's brand new, everything they, one year, wipe it all out and go with 160,000?
No, we won't at this point, you know.
But where are you planning on wiping it all out? Were you planning on wiping it all out and spending 160 in one year?
One of, I, I can't say that for certain because like, like I told you, we just started meeting again.
Okay, I got, I'm just, my point...
One of our, one of our most recent additions, Rob Carbone, because he does this on a daily basis in North Reading, we asked he and Chris to serve as a subcommittee to go do an inventory of our equipment, identify the age and do, you know, I'm going to take a, a page from the playbook from Capital Improvement to identify when equipment was installed, what the life expectancy is and what the cost of replacement is. So that instead of being reactive, like we would like to be proactive, Chris identified the bulletin boards, which one are the messages on the two channels when the live, the live or the playback is not operating. So because those are five years, older than five years...
Those are like eight, eight years old, yeah.
He reported to us, they are no longer supported, they will not repair those. So if those die at this point, anyone knows anything electronic or computers, it's about five to six years and then if you don't replace it, it's generally not supported. So we felt it best to start replacing before it goes down.
I understand clearly what you're saying.
Yep.
And, and let me just say this, and I'm not going to drill this all night long. Number one, the town people elected me. I think someone here said it earlier tonight, sitting back here is not the easiest job in the world. And how I do my job is I take the most important thing that's put in front of me and I deal with it.
Yep.
Okay? I didn't strip, me, me, did not walk out of here that night stripping the cable committee of money. I said to myself, hmm, they may need 60, 70,000. We, you know, something might go down for a rainy day, we're going to, you know, I was never going to vote to strip all the money. But what I did do, I voted to put cameras in buildings, school, police, fire. The way the world is today and how dangerous the world is, I went home, I felt very comfortable. Granted, you guys, I understand, but me, I didn't strip you guys. I, I think there's emergency money there, I felt good at what I did. And I got what you're saying. Personally, I got what you're personally saying. And the reason I did what I did is because you're going to be repunished this year and you're going to get, you know, you're going to get replenished, you know what I'm saying? It wasn't like you're shutting down, no more money going in, we're pulling all the money away from you guys. We weren't. I, I felt good doing that and now the town people a little bit safer. So we don't, I don't want to argue, I appreciate what you guys do, but in the same token, I think the town's a much safer place, what we put in place. It was a very important thing. There's school shootings, there's police state shootings, there's mall shootings. I think it was very important. And for us to argue this point, I think is, is minute, I really do. And I, I understand your personal opinion and all that.
Yeah, I just think we should all be on the same page.
I got what you're saying. I hear you, I hear you. And, and the other thing is, you talk about being on the same page, there's equipment over the fire department. That's the first I've ever heard. And I've been a chairman here, I mean, a selectman here for about six years, I think now, whatever, whatever it is. I never heard, I didn't even know, I didn't even know what's equipment was over there. Can that equipment be pulled out? Can we reuse it around? I don't know. This is the first I've ever heard of it. I've never honestly heard, it was never being used. I didn't know that. I didn't. The first I've heard about it.
It's been there since 2014, I believe.
Yeah, I didn't, honestly, I didn't know about it. If we could reuse it, remove it or whatever, I mean, if it's good equipment, why let it sit there? I don't know what's over there. I don't even know the first thing about it, but...
Can I just comment on that?
Sure.
I think one of the issues is we have no staff to fill meetings. So when we have meetings in the fire station, they're conflicting with meetings in this room and that's why they're taking place in the fire station.
No, you told, I was told... No, you told, I was told in the past that no board or committee wanted to meet over there.
Well, people meet over there quite regularly. We have people meet over there.
It wasn't, wasn't.
We just have no one to film because it always conflicts with this middle room being used. That's why people meet over there.
Charlie and Chris are both capable of using the equipment and I have too. And I've never been requested to film anything over there.
Yeah, the meetings, when they're posted, I mean, Charlie's usually here filming the meetings in this room. Chris doesn't normally film meetings for us.
Yep.
Then you only do the selectmen's meetings, so.
Yep.
We've talked about it in the past that we need more staff to film meetings.
Okay, that's something.
It's been in our minutes. We've, I've sent you emails on it. We've talked about needing more recording staff.
So the equipment does have a purpose.
It does.
And it would be utilized if we had staff to, but if you're going to wait for somebody to ask you to film, you may wait a long time. I don't, I don't think anybody wants to be filmed because then it's, it's documented forever.
Yep.
Nobody can't say, well, those didn't come out of my, you know, lips. Yeah, yeah, they did. I can replay it for you too.
Yeah, I've talked in the past about adding the same setup in the library. We have a ton of programs in the library that aren't filmed. Like we could do more equipment over there. I've talked to you guys for a few years about adding the live streaming. I have emails going back to 2016 on that. So some of these things are not just recent. I have been asking for some stuff for the last few years for the cable committee to look at, cable advisory board to look at.
I do not recall the live streaming until recently.
We did look into it a year or two ago. I don't think it was the earth channel, but I looked at trying to get the new tech system live stream through YouTube. I don't recall it being a super priority at the time. But, you know, now that you guys have asked for us to do it, we can get that done. So we've got a proposal to move forward with as of, you know, January, whenever we meet next, we can get that approved.
With each passing moment, and I don't recall, I don't recall, it sounds more like the Watergate hearings. And this is coming from both sides to the table, it's not just you, not just us. It seems to be coming from both sides. So I think we need to clean the slate and get all these I don't recalls off the table and make sure there's.
I think we just need to look forward to.
Communication between the two bodies here so that when you don't recall, he does. And when I don't recall, he does, or he does, so that we don't get into this, this match again. This is not good for anybody, let's face it, right? I wasn't here in 2014, so I, I don't know what to say about that. That's, again, that's the news to me. I was, I'm just as shocked to find out there's equipment over there as, as Bill was. So that's something we'll, we'll have to, to deal with going forward. Again, our main discussion here and the main point of bringing you, asking you to come, is the contract discussions and just begin the high-level understanding of where you folks were. We just want to get to 50,000 foot level. We don't want to get down to the nitty-gritty. There's time to get into the trenches, but this is just a preliminary, where are you? Where have you been going? What do you see this advancing? Do you see this wrapping up in time? You see, do you see an extension being requested? There are milestones within the contract. I, do you anticipate missing any of the milestones?
No, I think talking to, like I say, Rob Carbon, who is working on his contract in North Reading. He is working on a timeline, which I will be glad to present to you in January for your review and input on if you believe we, and plan on being before you, you know, minimum of at least once a month, you know, for the next year to get this done. If it's, you know, at every one of your meetings, maybe a small update. And then at once a month, a five or 10-minute sit-down just to review. We will make you aware of the public hearings. I will be asking anyone at home that when we do the ascertainment hearing, it will be vital, repeat, vital, to have participation. Comcast looks at that very closely. When we have that, I would ideally like to have 100 people in the room. I would like to have people who want to voice whatever their concerns are. Write us here, Groveland Cable TV Advisory Board, care of town hall, and so we can have your input. We will be designing a survey that will go out to get people's input. And it's really important that people do not just throw this away. We need, to put us in a good bargaining position, we need input from people, what they want to see. But I believe, you know, I've been involved with pub, public cable access here since the 80s. And at one point, I was the only person, you know. I didn't have Charlie or Chris. You know, I was the cable camera operator. I was the person putting it all up. I was the person doing all the bulletin board. But I'm a believer of how important it is, again, so that government meetings go up unedited, uninterrupted. So people, when they go to the polls, whatever, however they vote, but at least they saw the same information I did, even if they draw a different conclusion.
And will you be taping your own meetings?
Yes, we do.
Yes. So that will be up, is that up yet?
It's uploading right now. I got it yesterday or today.
So you can watch our, you know, meeting.
Last meeting.
Yep.
Anyone else have any further questions?
Just, just a comment. If you, if you saw the, in the newspaper today, there was a new ruling, I believe it was authored by the FCC, looking at limiting money for cable access. And so that's being fought to restore some of it. Trying to, some of them had to shut local access channels off because they didn't have, they didn't have the money to, from the cable provider to, to run those and that based upon the new ruling. So we have to keep an eye on that. But I do remember Tracy, the, being brought up at a meeting before about the fire station being, being wired and to get meetings over there. But it probably is because there's no, nobody to, to record the meeting. Or maybe, maybe we could have some of these boards committees meet, meet there. If they got, if they got a couple going on at the same time, we have somebody to, to film it over there. That's, that's all I got now.
Thank you.
Oh, Seth, Phil?
Um, thank you, yep, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I just ask a question? So we don't have any minutes from the cable TV, cable TV advisory board since April 7th, 2014. Can you turn any minutes that you've had into the town clerk? Because we have nothing on our website.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll approve this one at our next meeting and turn that over to the town clerk.
And anything from the past four years as well? Is what you're saying, 2014? It's a long time ago.
I know we had one or two other meetings, so, you know, those are probably online.
We were quite a while without, without a quorum.
Without a quorum and, and I will report that when Ken Hamilton was the chairperson, he insisted on keeping the minutes. And I know when he passed, I approached his family about the, and he never, never gave anyone the minutes that he had kept.
Minutes are public record and if, if you're looking for, you know, that kind of communication, it'd probably help by putting your own minutes on the board so that we don't have to ask the questions, we can just read it.
We, we will submit that, but that's why we are taping our meetings too, so people can see everything that takes part.
Terrific. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Moving right along and not so swiftly, I might add. We're at the Soul Street redevelopment project update.
I'm just going to give a brief two-minute update. So the redevelopment work group had its first meeting last Thursday. We met, town council was involved. So we had a hour-long or so meeting. I think there were some expectations from both sides that weren't quite met yet. So the developer's going to go back and regroup and submit some plans and then we'll reconvene again, probably after the holiday. But we have formed that committee and started discussions.
Terrific. Moving on, we've got, does anybody have any comment on that Soul Street project? It's just in its infancy, I'm, I'm not sure there's much to discuss after just one meeting for an hour.
No.
Draft town survey.
So I took the questions that Selectman Watson and Dunn had given me. I didn't hear from the other board members and composed a draft survey. As I said, we really want to stick to a one-page front and back. If there's, I took question number one pretty much directly from Wes Newberry. That's pretty much their language in their draft, in their survey. But the rest of the questions, if you have comments, want to change anything, want to see anything different. Ideally, it would be, which we may not have time now, but I would say ideally it would be to be in the January 1st tax bill. So that the board would have to make a decision tonight in order to have that happen. Otherwise, it would be not until, not until April.
Not until April. I'd like to reword the first question. To, to, should Groveland move toward the town manager?
Okay. Like I said, I took that pretty much word for word from Wes Newberry, so. However, you'd like to word it.
Maybe just me.
Number, number six, would you support an increase in your taxes to build and operate a senior center? I would just see if they, I guess, I mean.
Well, but there's a difference between people wanting a senior center and people wanting to pay for a senior center. So if you want to just know if they want one, that's fine, but people then would still have to pay for it unless the town is planning to fund it somehow.
Right.
How about getting back to Bill? Getting back to what you said earlier this evening, why don't we modify that to say bingo?
Right.
Because I think it's pretty clear, they already voted no. I think we're going to get the same kind of response.
But the thing, would you support an increase in taxes to build? It just seems like you're getting, you're getting, I know what you're saying, that your taxes are going to go up to have a senior center, I get it. Ultimately, that's where you're heading, so, yeah, I mean, change it to do that with a.
Senior slash rec, right?
Rec center, yep.
I think you got a better chance.
Oh, so you want to keep the first half and just add senior center slash rec center?
Right.
Okay. Question nine and 10. I pretty much just picked, we talked about a few things at Center Street, Strawberry Fields and the Pine. So I just kind of picked things for people to rank so that we have enough categories. Again, those are open if you want to change those or add anything there.
This is going to be going out in the upcoming tax bills?
Well, it depends how the board, yep. If you're ready to move on it, it can go in the January 1st tax bill.
It's in here somewhere. I made a mess of it.
Eleven. I think I got a price next to it. I know what I like, but once I get the cost, then I don't like it so much.
Well, we'd have to probably discuss it again anyway. Down the road, right?
Should we put in some estimated costs or somebody, so they have?
I wouldn't even know estimated costs.
I mean, somebody's range from a couple of hundred to a couple, a few million.
Right, but at least all we're trying to do is get a feel for what they're, what are they interested in? You know what I mean?
What they feel is a priority.
We're not voting on anything, we're just trying to get, it's a survey basically. Are they interested in doing it at all or not? You know what I mean?
It's certainly short enough so that, you know, some of these surveys you see go, go on, we're page after page. This is, could be done on one page and it, nobody's going to get bored filling it out.
I think it's a good start.
Just that somewhere, right? Now, question eight. When we say sponsored, do we really mean fund?
I think fund, plan, have. I think it's really everything. Does the town want an annual parade? I can say, word it like that if you prefer, just being, does the town want an annual parade?
Well, I think everybody and their, and their mother's going to raise their hand and say, yeah, I want to sponsor a parade. And any town is going to cross them, there's a lot of hands are going to come down, so.
But a lot of times when you go for the sponsor, you go to the businesses, you go, you don't go to the homeowners per se unless you're going to go to town meeting and ask for 5,000 at town meeting for it. You know what I mean?
Right, I mean, if it's overwhelmingly in favor, then yes, we could look to maybe add a budget line item every year for, you know, along with the pumpkin fest that we, that the town funds through the budget. We could add additional funds if that's something that people feel strongly about.
I think we can grow, once we know they want it, we can grow, we can grow. You know what I mean?
All right, no, the Groveland Day was already thinking about trying to incorporate something like that into their day.
Right, right.
Right, and that's possible too. So if it's a strongly in favor, maybe you task it to the Groveland Day Committee and have it be the kickoff of the day's festivities be a parade. I guess it really depends how you want to use the results of this survey.
A good start.
So with the exception of changing the wording for number six and just adding slash recreation center. Bill, did you want to change something to question one?
I think if I want to reword that to, should Groveland move toward a town manager as opposed to Groveland should have a town manager? I suppose it's a matter of semantics at that point. It's going to yield the same kind of result, I think.
Well, do you want me to just reverse should in Groveland? Should Groveland have a town manager instead of making it a fact in that statement?
Yeah, I think that's, it's more of a question at that point, right? Well, it doesn't really matter. Again, it's a matter of semantics. It's grammatically correct either way, so it doesn't really matter.
But should Groveland move toward?
Well, so the question is, so it's, the statement is Groveland should have a town manager. Strongly opposed, opposed, neutral in favor, strongly in favor.
But should Groveland move toward, we're going in that direction. Does that make you feel better?
You know, when I think about it really, after I throw it around in my mind, I don't really think it makes a difference. I, I think it's just.
If someone doesn't want a town manager, they don't want a town manager.
Six of one have and those have another, so it, the point is irrelevant.
Need a vote, Mr.?
You should, yes.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the survey as laid out.
As amended.
As amended and laid out to go into the next tax bill. And see what we can get for some kind of answers.
I'll, I'll second that.
Awesome. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion on the matter? Good seeing us, it's nine overs and. Good seeing as there's nine of us in favor. Okay, we've basically gone through everything else, so we're on old or unfinished business, believe it or not. We've got to that point. Mike mixed a heck of a meeting, a mess, didn't he? Well, Denise is on overtime, double time and a half, I think.
I'll skip this for tonight, 'cause it's 10 o'clock, so we'll let that go. I'll skip the next one.
Slickman Watson?
Uh, nothing.
Okay, other items not reasonably anticipated, time of posting. Slickman Watson?
Nothing.
Slickman Dunn?
Nope.
I have nothing either. Selectmen report, Selectman Dunn?
Uh, we'll do it next time, it's late.
Selectman Watson?
Uh, nothing to report.
I'm gonna give a really brief, very brief, uh, the high school building committee met on Tuesday of last week, and...
Wednesday.
Wednesday, that's right. It's all these days go by so fast. And we were able to see the initial architectures and artist rendition of the proposed new middle school, high school, and I've gotta tell you, it is a beautiful, beautiful building. Yeah, you will be impressed, without a doubt. The structure is going to be a, a really, uh, something to see. Hopefully, we can get it done. Other than that, we really didn't discuss much, other than a contractor. And we decided on Rich.
Yes.
And those were the two most valuable things to come out of that meeting, and because of time...
So, the contract already put a bidding?
So, it's a CM at risk.
Yes.
So, they're gonna review the proposal and compare it with the architectures, architects' proposal, so that we have a more realistic, um, price.
The subcommittee did review six different contractors. Interviewed them all, ranked them all, and came with their...
What do they do if this thing goes over budget? Let's say they get going on it, and it takes four, five years.
Right, so that's, I mean, that's why, right, people criticize over and over, but that's why on ballot questions, there are no dollar amounts. Because on public building projects, you can't stay, if, if prices escalate, if the cost of materials changes...
What happens if it went over by a million, say, or something?
It's still at the discretion of the towns. Once you give that go-ahead to move forward, you're voting on the project, not on the price.
You should make sure that people know what they're voting for.
But you're in business too, I mean, you get, you get contracted to irrigate this certain thing. Halfway through the job, the cut, the, the customer comes to you with a change order.
Oh, I know.
Oh, well, you know, that's not for free, right? So, we, we, the whole idea is to really do the project as best as we can and mitigate any change orders down the road. So, it's really to scope it out, um, to the nth degree, so to minimize that possibility. But the fact is, you just can't predict the future. I mean, you can do all you can to mitigate some of the liability potential down the road, but you can't completely eliminate it all.
Right, and that's the benefit. So, we did pay a little more money to hire a CM at risk, to have a more realistic, um, budget. That they, like I said, they work with the architects, and they each provide their own budget, and then they sit through and compare line by line.
So, that's all I have. So, moving right on to correspondence. We have the minutes from the November 6th, 2018 meeting. Minutes from November 28th, 2018. Draft personnel policy from the Personal Advisory Board. Town of Groveland, change of government process. We have a summary action letter to Timothy O'Connor following November 28th dog dangerousness hearing, and we have a letter from HUD as a follow-up on Groveland Housing Authority's outstanding issues. And we'll go right into finance director's time.
Of course, I have a lot of stuff tonight. I will go quick. So, first off, I wanted to thank Bill Dunn, the Highway Department, the Light Department, and Steve, our facilities coordinator, for all the help with the Christmas tree decorations and lights. The trees might not be as big as last year, but they look great out there, all lit up. So, I just wanna thank everyone for their help with that. A couple months ago, I applied for a grant through our insurance company, and I'm pleased to announce that I was awarded that grant last week. It's for $10,000 for new facility and fleet management software, which includes a full facility assessment. So, the company will come out and actually do a full inventory of the buildings, look at our, um, boilers, our mechanics, and actually inventory them, date them, put a life expectancy, fill out a database, and then provide that database to us to maintain going forward. Same thing with the fleet management. It will actually give us a tool to manage all of the vehicles that are on our insurance policy, when they have oil changes, when they have maintenance and repairs. So, it actually gives us a nice tool to use, um, going forward. Today, the police chief and I attended a federal opioid forum in Methuen, put on by actually many federal and state agencies. It was pretty informative on some resources available to the towns. We had the FBI, they had the Secret Service, DEA, HUD, HHS. It was moderated by Congresswoman Nikki Songas. It was pretty informative. I have some material that took back, that we took back. The biggest benefit, I would say, today is they gave us a website that if someone is in need of a rehab, it allows you to plug in the town, and it tells you where, how many beds are available and where. And if you need residential assistance, like long-term rehab, it allows you to go on a waiting list for when a spot opens up. So, it's pretty beneficial. Not that we have a significant number of cases here, but still, every time one pops up, we don't have the resources to provide, so this is a great resource for us. At some point, we need to discuss the water runoff issue that we've been having around town. I have a message on our website. The police and highway have been out trying to deal with it, but we have a combination of just regular runoff from residential homes running into the public way and freezing over and causing massive issues. And people who have sort of PVC pipe tied into their sump pump pouring directly out into the public way. Two major roads right now is Rollins and Seven Star. The Highway Department was out on both of those today, breaking up the ice, trying to chip away what's there, because it is becoming a significant issue. The highway's been sanding it several times a day. This morning, they put straight salt on it, trying to melt it, and it just didn't do anything. When the chief and I were coming back from our, um, meeting, we actually drove by both of them, we got out, we looked to see sort of where it was coming from. We talked to the Highway Department. The police have tried to do some door-to-door education, but right now, we have no way to enforce it. I put an email out to the managers listserv around the community, uh, the Commonwealth, to see how other towns are handling this. So far, the only responses I got were people looking for the same information, 'cause they're in the same boat. I do think it's probably a bylaw that we'll need in the immediate, short term. I think with the MS-4 requirements that we've been talking about the last few years, that's going to be mandatory, that you cannot pump basement water into our catch basins. That will become illegal. But we need to figure out a way to deal with this. Rollin Street, the guys were thinking of digging a trench tomorrow along the side of the road and filling it in with some rocks to see if the water will stay along the serp, the side, instead of filling it in the middle of the road. And Seven Star, actually, one of the homeowners came in today, I'm assuming they saw us out there looking, told me that he noticed the issue it's been causing and actually shut that pipe off this weekend, because it's just, you come around that curve and you hit that ice, and it's dangerous. So, at some point, we will need to address that more significantly. And I apologize that my teeth are chattering, I am freezing.
Yeah, it's golden.
West Newbury would like to schedule a meeting with the three community boards of selectmen and the school superintendent to discuss the school project and the regional agreement contingency plan, should the school project not pass. So, they're looking at some dates in January. I threw out January 14th, 'cause it was your off Monday, but they'd like, um, some other dates and times that the board would be willing to meet. So, I'm assuming, obviously, evenings is Saturday morning off the table. Would you be willing to meet on a Saturday if need be? Just trying to get some dates to coordinate back with the other towns.
Personally, I'd be willing to meet with anyone, anywhere, at any time. Saturdays, Sundays, Friday night, doesn't matter. I mean, this is, this is an important project for this community. Again, this has gotta be done right, and it's gotta be a home run, or else we're in trouble. So, whatever we can do, I'm open.
To go back to what you just said, I thought a lot of that water was 'cause we've had so much rain, and it was leaching out of the side of the hills.
Well, it is, but it's leaching out of residential home areas. I mean, so some of it is being pumped out of the basement.
I know, when I drove by, I see, I know what you're talking about, but I always thought it was the stuff that would, because we had so much rain, and it's coming out of, like, the hills and leaching into the road, I didn't realize it was pumps.
Yes, no, you'll, if you drive by, actually, the big areas, you'll see there's some pipes coming right out of the driveway.
And it's creating a very dangerous situation, because in the morning, going down Rollins Toward Georgetown, the sun is in your eyes, so you're dealing with, with solar glare.
No, I was surprised, I, I thought it was just leach.
And when they pull over to the other side of the road to avoid the ice and snow, they don't see the oncoming traffic. So, i- i- it's potentially a fatal situation that they're causing.
Right, the, the main part of Rollins is, I think, just coming down off the hill, but when you come a few houses down, there's, um, um, pipes.
I know there's one out on, on 97. It, it comes out of his basement, down 97, out to Center Street, down around the corner. And, and it, the pipe's right there on the curb, it goes right over.
Yeah, so the police have stopped on a few, and some people have been very, um, like, some people are new to the area, recently moved in and didn't realize it, and we'll try and see what they can do. I don't really know what the other options are. Like I said, eventually, the MS-4 is gonna require us to deal with that, 'cause you can't pump that type of water in the catch basins any longer.
I would think and hope that most people, if you alerted them to this potential hazard, would be responsible enough to curtail it somehow.
Yeah, so the one thing I'm trying to figure out, um, and if I don't get an answer from the other communities, I'll reach out to council just to ask that should there be an accident? Is it the town's liability or the homeowner that's pumping into the street that would be liable for that? So, I'm just trying to find that out.
Similar to, similar to plowing a, a snowbank in, from your driveway into the street, right?
Correct. So, we actually have a bylaw that prohibits that. We prohibit snow, pushing snow across the public way. Like I said, some towns just have a bylaw that says you're prohibited from putting anything in the public way. This may cover that, if we just sort of cover that as anything. But I'm gonna work on that for our spring town meeting. The fire department consultants are wrapping up their, um, report, but they got back to me with some, um, proposals based on questions that the board asked of their last, of the meeting with us. So, I'm not sure if you really wanna go into that now. It sort of breaks down all the other options that they have and could provide to the town.
Can that be distributed to us that we can look at, kinda chew on, and discuss it at another, at a later date?
Yes, so I can send you that.
That'd be great.
And then my last thing is, I was asked to attend a meeting, like, two weeks ago now, in the city of Haverhill with representatives from Haverhill and the state. They are looking to form a community rowing group. As you know, the, Haverhill High School uses the pines for their crew team. They are looking for a more permanent location, the pines being one that's been proposed. The, apparently, there's a soft spot for several state reps with rowing, and they were at this meeting and are pledging funds from state grants. There is a former Olympian that has a nonprofit rowing group in Boston that has pledged some funds. What they ultimately would like to propose is perhaps building a storage facility at this point. They like the idea of the pines as being their sort of point of origin. They've reached out to Pentucket to see if Pentucket would be interested in starting a crew team. I have a follow-up meeting with them, I think, on the 20th. So, I told them that I don't know that the board would be against it, but I think we'd need to discuss it. We've had some discussions about the pines and a master plan and, you know, space down there and where we would put it and what it would mean for the rest of the area. They said that they could provide possibly grant money for a master plan, uh, a revised master plan of the area. Maybe additional funds for, uh, we talked about the playground, but adding lights down there, adding more security down there, so on and so forth. So, as long as it's not something that the board is immediately against, I will meet with them on the 20th and then invite them to a board meeting to actually discuss their proposal with you all and the opportunities it could present.
I mean.
Do you have any objection?
No.
So, I will...
I'm all in, of course.
So, I'll hear them out on the air to discuss it further.
Sure.
That is all I have.
All right. We've reached Selectmen's time. Selectman Watson?
Uh, I just got one item, an inquiry. We should be about ready to post the Assistant Treasurer's position?
Yep. Well, at some point, I'm not quite ready yet, but at some point, I will.
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay, that was quick.
One item.
Selectman Dunn?
Um, I'll, it's late, I'll come back. But I actually talked to you there in the week about it, it was just, I thought of someone for the congratulation volunteer of the month.
Oh.
Get back to you at a later date.
Super. Uh, I know it's late, I do have just a couple of things, and I'll be very, very quick. First of all, whoever, we have the speed bumps down the pines. Tremendous job, whoever did it, thank you very much. I think that's gonna do, uh, exactly what we want, slow cars down going through that parking lot, especially during the busy times of the year. This is our last board meeting of the year, so I wanna wish everyone in the town a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Dwali, um, Kwanzaa, thank you, and any other holiday I might have missed. I wanna thank all the employees for their dedication and the hard work to the town throughout the year. We don't often say it enough here on the board, but, uh, thank you very much for all you do. All the boards and committees, despite sometimes our disagreements, we really do appreciate your service to the town. A lot of these things couldn't get done without your volunteerism, and we do appreciate it, even though at times, it may not sound that way. Town meeting, I wanna thank everyone that showed up for the latest town meeting. It was very important issues we had to discuss, and because of your involvement, we were able to, to get those things done. And out of that town meeting, uh, there were some, people have talked to me about, uh, some things that I wanna quell and squash right now. There is absolutely no discussions to put a brothel in the post office. For two very good reasons. One is, we do not own the post office, and two, prostitution in Massachusetts is illegal. So, that was just a failed attempt at some humor there, and there is absolutely no truth to those rumors. So, please stop the phone calls and the emails, and go back to your homes, and you can relax. Thank you very much, that's all I have. If we're all done, um...
Make a motion to adjourn at 10, what, 19?
Uh, I'll give you that.
Second.
Motion to adjourn.